So welcome, everyone, to the Wednesday, August 2, 2023, formal meeting of the Iowa City Planning and Zoning Commission. We'll start off with roll call. For the agenda taker, we'll note that commissioners present are Wade Elliott Hench, Craig Padron. Commissioner's absent is Townsend. Item number three, public discussion of any item not on the agenda. If there's any member of the public that's present who'd like to address the commission on an item that's not on tonight's agenda, now's your opportunity. If you are interested, please come up to the podium. Second call for public comment. Seeing no one coming up, we'll go on to the next item. The first item up under zoning code amendment items, case number REZ23-001. This is consideration of an amendment to Title 14, zoning to improve housing choice, increase housing supply, and encourage affordability. And Maggie?
Yeah, I would like to just say I had a conversation with Bob Miklow about the proposed zoning changes on Friday, July 21. Our conversation centered on the implication these new rules may have on older neighborhoods, and I am able to remain impartial regardless of the conversation.
So the public knows. Could you say what Bob's former position was as a public with John?
He's with the planning department. I don't know his position.
Okay. Was it senior planner? Was it the same position? Okay. And now staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Members of the commission, Anne Russett with Neighborhood and Development Services. I'm going to kick off this presentation and then turn it over to Kirk, who's going to get into more specifics about the proposed amendments and the analysis. But first, I'd like to provide a little bit of background. This slide shows a general timeline of how we got where we are today. It started with the city council adopting its first Affordable Housing Action Plan in 2016. The plan identified 15 action steps, including changes to zoning regulations. The changes to the zoning regulations were the only action items that were not completed after its adoption. In 2019, the city adopted a Fair Housing Choice Study, which reviewed impediments to accessing housing because of protected class such as race, gender, or disability, as codified in the Federal Fair Housing Act. This study included recommended actions to affirmatively further fair housing based on extensive public input, such as targeted feedback from stakeholder interviews and focus groups, a fair housing survey, public events, and a public adoption process. One of the most significant fair housing issues identified was a lack of affordable rental housing, and improving housing choice was one of the many strategies recommended to help address this issue. In 2002, the Affordable Housing Action Plan was updated to build off of previous efforts in support of affordable housing. A number of public input sessions were held, including a citywide survey, general outreach activities, targeted stakeholder meetings, and other events. Later in 2022, the city council adopted the strategic plan, which drew upon previous planning work, studies, and community conversations. One of the action steps included in the strategic plan is advancing prioritized recommendations in the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan. In addition to these adopted plans and public engagements, there's been several meetings with the commission. In February 2023, staff from Neighborhood and Development Services provided a comprehensive overview to the commission of how the city works to address housing affordability. Staff discussed its efforts to support housing through financial incentives. We also presented an initial summary of the proposed amendments that we'll be detailing tonight. In April, we presented the results of the 2022 Residential Development Analysis, which looked at housing development over the course of the 2022 calendar year. This analysis determined that if residential growth continues at its recent pace, the city will only be able to accommodate less than 6,300 new residents by 2030, when the projected demand is over 10,000 new residents. At the same meeting, council member Thomas presented the city council's strategic plan. Last month, staff provided a comprehensive summary of the proposed zoning code amendments you'll be considering tonight. Housing affordability is a complex issue. There is no one solution, and there are many factors that influence housing affordability. The continued growth within the community, driven by the quality of life and strong economic base, in addition to a housing supply that is not meeting the demand generated by this growth. This can result in continued high prices and rents, which indicate there's an unmet demand for housing. When thinking about housing affordability, there is a role for zoning. The zoning regulations can restrict development and act as a barrier to create a diverse housing stock, or they can support and allow a diversity of housing options for a community. We are proposing amendments to the code that help to ensure that our zoning regulations don't act as a barrier, but instead allow and encourage a diversity of housing types. The goals of the proposed zoning code amendments include increasing housing supply to meet the current demand, increasing housing diversity to improve housing choice by removing barriers for housing types that generally cost less than detached single-family. This could include townhomes, duplexes, and accessory apartments. We want to incentivize income-restricted affordable housing through density bonuses and other tools. We want to address fair housing issues to ensure persons with disabilities have equal access to housing, and we want to implement the adopted plans that we have in place. So this is a slide that just shows the variety of plans that I've already discussed. In addition to the comprehensive plan, the proposed amendments do align with the adopted land use policy direction, as well as the other plans I've already mentioned. And just going back to the strategic plan one more time, the proposed amendments are tied to the city's core value for racial equity, social justice, and human rights. They're aimed at removing and addressing systemic barriers present in all facets of city government, including land use decisions. It also aligns with the Housing and Neighborhoods Impact Area, which encourages updating our zoning code to encourage compact neighborhoods and ensure we have a diverse housing stock, and addressing the unique needs of vulnerable populations and low-to-moderate-income neighborhoods. And then finally, in the strategic plan, the action plan recommends advancing the prioritized recommendations of the 22 Affordable Housing Action Plan. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Kirk.
Kirk Lehman, Associate Planner. Regarding the proposed amendments, I'm going to try and balance a mixture of giving a complete description of what it is for your sake as a refresher and for the sake of those in the audience, but I'm also going to try and do it in such a way that might be a little simpler than I've done it in, for example, my amendment, the staff report that you received. That has a very technical description, a lot of these. I'm going to try and describe them in more generally understandable terms. We'll see how I do. It can be complex with a zoning code. So really, the way that we're viewing these proposed amendments is that generally, they are a prerequisite to enable the construction of housing units that tend to be more affordable within the community than what's currently allowed. So it really complements our other programs that more directly subsidize low-to-moderate-income households and affordable housing that is rent and sale price restricted. But with that being said, it does also include incentives to produce affordable housing that is income-restricted and rent and sales price restricted. So there will still be barriers to affordable housing within the community. This isn't something that will solve affordable housing, but really, what we're trying to make sure is that the zoning code is not one of those barriers to affordable housing within the community. So with that being said, the proposed amendments are really organized under five general categories that we've previously discussed. In general, we've grouped them with that, and then with each individual proposed amendment being discussed separately with a separate analysis. So that's the way that the presentation's going to unfold, similar to what was in the staff report. Those general categories are increasing flexibility for a range of housing types, modifying design standards, providing additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing, creating regulatory incentives for affordable housing, and then also, more generally, addressing fair housing. So that first set of standards related to increasing flexibility for a range of housing types has four different proposed amendments that are a part of it. The purpose of this is really twofold. So one is that providing for a flexibility of housing types can help increase the supply of housing on one hand, and on the other hand, it also increases the diversity of housing types available, with a focus on those housing types that tend to be more affordable to lower-income households, especially than what's in the zone, such as your standard detached single-family. So I'll provide examples of each of these in the analysis as I get into them, but first I wanted to start with just a summary of what the proposed amendments actually are. So the first change would be to allow duplexes and up to two attached single-family uses more widely in lower-density single-family zones. So these uses are currently only allowed on corner lots, and the zones that we're talking about specifically are RS5 and RS8 zones. The second change is to allow townhome-style multifamily uses in higher-density single-family zones, so those would be RS12 zones, and the code does currently allow for up to six side-by-side, single-family townhomes, but if they're on a common lot, it is currently not allowed. So this would be allowing up to six side-by-side, multifamily townhomes on a single lot. The third change would be to allow second-story multifamily more through a simpler process in certain commercial zones, specifically the CC2 or Community Commercial Zone, and then also to enable the Board of Adjustment to allow ground-floor residential uses in commercial zones. So for the Board of Adjustment to allow that use, it would require a special exception, which requires that a certain set of specific and general approval criteria are met. Those approval criteria are included in your packet, but generally, they're intended to make sure that the commercial intent of the zone is maintained, even with residential uses, and then second, also to provide protections for historic properties. With a special exception, the general criteria are generally related to impacts to surrounding property owners, compliance with the comprehensive plan, making sure that you have utilities, et cetera, those sorts of things. So they're kind of more general standards versus those specific standards are specifically for allowing that ground-floor multifamily use in a commercial zone. The fourth change would be to treat assisted group living more similarly to multifamily uses. So assisted group living are things like congregate or nursing homes. Generally, they look pretty similar to multifamily uses. They act pretty similar to multifamily uses. So what this does in effect is allow these uses in more zones than is currently allowed, and in some cases, it streamlines the approval for these uses in those zones, specifically in the low-density multifamily zone or RM12 zone. At the same time, it would no longer allow this use in the intensive commercial zone, which is generally a semi-industrial zone. It's a zone that we've determined doesn't accommodate household living uses, and so we would propose that the assisted group living use no longer be allowed. Which brings us into the analysis stage. So like I said, I'm going to go kind of item by item as we move forward. So for allowing duplexes and up to two attached single-family uses more widely in lower-density zones, the existing situation is that these uses are only allowed in corner lots, but they do tend to be more affordable than the detached single-family homes, which is the other residential use allowed in this zone. As a result, the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan recommends expanding where these uses are allowed, from just corner lots to additional lots in lower-density zones. So in terms of anticipated impacts, staff really started by looking at existing parcels, although we do believe that the primary impact is going to be that in greenfield sites, this is going to allow these uses more readily and in more locations. So we would expect the primary impact to be to greenfield sites, but for existing areas, it would allow some lots to accommodate, or some existing lots to accommodate, possibly accommodate duplex uses. So in this case, looking at existing parcels based on lot size and lot characteristics, it could allow up to a maximum of 2,900 lots around the community from this proposed change could accommodate duplex uses. In addition, if this amendment is adopted, in addition to the lot size reduction that's proposed later in the code, that would decrease the minimum lot size required for duplex use in an RS5 zone from 12,000 to 10,000, that could allow up to an additional 2,200 lots that could accommodate these uses. Within the university impact area, that's the area that's closest to the university, that would be 170 parcels or 90 parcels respectively. However, based on our experience in zones that already allow duplex uses within these zones, specifically the RNS12 zone, that is a zone that is located predominantly near downtown. It does allow duplex uses already, and we haven't seen too much, too substantial redevelopment in that area over the past 30 years. So since 1992, we've seen five single-family homes that were demolished to build a duplex, so that's about 1% of current parcels. We've also seen, over that time, more units convert from duplex to single-family units rather than vice versa. So this would be a modest change on existing parcels, staff believes, with the primary impact being that in newly developing areas, it would allow these uses more widely, similar to what we do with form-based zones that have been recently adopted. And the reason I'm talking about duplexes predominantly over attached single-family, attached single-family have essentially the same lot size standards as duplexes. However, they would require re-subdivision of lots, so those would come before council at a later time if re-subdivisions were proposed. So the primary impact would be for those duplex uses, except in new subdivisions. In terms of actual lots that might be impacted, this map shows existing lots. Again, we expect most to be in greenfield sites, but these are the existing lots that could be impacted. So green lots are those that could currently allow duplexes, and you can see that they're scattered throughout the city. It just depends on where there are street intersections essentially, and that the lot sizes are large enough. The yellow areas are those areas that would allow duplexes if mid-block duplexes were allowed. Generally, these are outside of the city core, as a lot of those lots are too small. So you'll see them throughout most of the rest of the city. There are some within the city core, especially if you look at Manville Heights. Finally, there are orange areas that would allow duplexes if mid-block duplexes were allowed and duplex lot sizes were reduced. Like I said, that's a later proposed amendment, so if both were adopted, those are where they could be located. Those are scattered through a number of areas, but a lot of them are located in older portions of the city. That does include areas near the north side, morning side, Twain, Longfellow, Oakwoods neighborhoods, but it is in lots of areas throughout the city. You also see a substantial portion in the south district, and you'll notice some parallels as we get into lots that become conforming under the lot size reduction proposed later. The gray areas, which you can barely see on this map, are areas that won't be affected. And whether a duplex is established, these are lots that might allow it. It does not account for the fact that some of these lots might already have duplex or other uses, commercial uses, for example, whether they'd be conforming or not. It also doesn't factor in property values or covenants or property ownership, things like that. So there are a number of factors that impact whether a use or a single-family lot could become a duplex lot. You know, this just gives you an idea of kind of that upper bound. This is the amount, the maximum that could be impacted, based on staff's analysis. The second change is looking at townhome-style multifamily uses in higher-density single-family zones. Like I mentioned, up to six attached single-family townhomes are already allowed, and this would just allow it on a single lot, essentially. And one of the reasons that we're looking at this is because it does facilitate a flexibility and arrangement of housing types, but it also can be more affordable while providing a similar look from the street. So if you look at the two images that I have there, the image on the left is attached single-family townhomes. The image on the right is townhome-style multifamily. They look very similar from the street, with the main difference being the lot arrangement. So in terms of anticipated impacts, we don't anticipate that this would have a large impact in the number of units produced, but it does add that flexibility, and it can make that cost of construction a little more affordable. The third change is looking at multifamily uses in commercial zones. So currently, second-story commercial in the community commercial zone requires Board of Adjustment approval. That does require additional time and resources for those uses, and multifamily uses are not allowed on the ground floor in most commercial zones. It's pretty much restricted to central business zones. So in terms of the anticipated impact of the proposed changes, it would simplify the process to allow mixed-use buildings where you have commercial on the ground floor and residential above, what we would call a vertically mixed-use building in important commercial centers. So there's an example of a vertically mixed-use building on the right. And it would allow the Board of Adjustment to approve multifamily buildings in most commercial areas, as long as the approval criteria mentioned in the packet are met. And that, in turn, facilitates what we call horizontally mixed-use development, where you might have a single lot with a multifamily building and a commercial building on it. In the past, to allow those, it would require an OPD rezoning, and would likely, or would require different zones with different parcels. So it would simplify that process as well, and that's really why we're looking at this one. In terms of areas that allow multifamily uses currently, the blue areas allow them by right, so with no additional standards, whereas the green areas allow them with additional standards. Most of those standards in this case are that they have to be on the second story. The yellow areas on the map are areas that allow them with Board of Adjustment approval. Again, that would be on the second story. Under the proposed amendment, those would be the areas that would allow them, as long as they met certain standards, rather than by Board of Adjustment approval. And then the areas in orange are those that would allow townhome-style multifamily in addition to single-family attached townhomes. So those are tied to the previous amendment, but I did include it on this map because it's tied to those multifamily uses and proposed amendments. The final change in this category is to treat assisted group living uses more similarly to multifamily uses. Again, assisted group living includes group care facilities, like nursing homes, and assisted group living facilities. They are treated as group living rather than household living, so the standards about them are generally more restrictive, but it is generally a best practice to treat them similar, to similarly sized household living uses. In this case, most of that's multifamily. So for example, Hickory Trails Estates is a new assisted group living use that's being built. It looks very similar to multifamily and has similar impacts. So in terms of the anticipated impacts, is that it would simplify the process to allow these uses, specifically in lower-density multifamily zones, the RM12 zone, and it would allow assisted group living in all zones that allow multifamily. So that primarily expands it to commercial zones, and it, like I said, it would no longer allow it in the intensive commercial zone. So in terms of what that looks like, here's a map that shows where these uses are allowed with current and proposed amendments. The green areas allow these uses if certain standards are met and would continue to do so. The yellow areas are areas that would allow, or that currently allow them with Board of Adjustment approval, but with the proposed amendments, it would allow them simply if certain standards are met, so it simplifies that process. The orange areas are areas that currently do not allow them, but would allow them if certain standards are met, and those are primarily the commercial zones. And then finally, the red areas are areas that currently allow these uses, but would no longer allow them, so those are those intensive commercial zones. The second set of standards, or of proposed amendments, are related to modifying design standards. And in this category, we have three different standards. The first is to eliminate two multifamily site development standards to provide flexibility. These are specifically material standards, and they're specifically that currently multifamily uses must have a two-foot masonry and/or brick base, or it could be a dressed concrete base. The second standard is that facade materials must wrap three feet around the corner of a unit. So if you have a different material on the front from the side, it has to wrap around the corner. So really, reducing those would increase the flexibility allowed and would help reduce the cost of construction for those uses. The second standard, it would be to adjust the design standards for duplex and up to two attached single-family units in mid-block locations. That's specifically in those lower-density residential zones, and it's designed such that it would do so without having garages that dominate the streetscape. So it does include some new standards for these mid-block locations that would limit garages to 60% of the facade, and it would also limit to 20 feet combined of garage face, so you could have either one double-wide garage with two parking spaces or two independent garages, single-wide garages that would be allowed. Now, they could be wider if they're set back 15 feet, so similar to what we require in form-based zones, but that does prevent them from dominating the streetscape, and if there is a rear alley, they must utilize it. The final standard is related to townhome-style multifamily uses again, and this is just simplifying the process by which a setback is reduced. I'll talk about that in more detail once I have a diagram, since it's hard to explain, but essentially, this would replace a minor modification process with just an administrative process. So it's tied to allowing those uses more liberally in the RS12 zone especially. So the first change, multifamily group living and institutional and civic uses in residential zones and in the Central Planning District have to meet certain design standards. The 2016 Affordable Housing Action Plan did recommend amending some of these standards. So as a result of the proposed amendment, the two standards that I mentioned would no longer be required. That is, that two feet of masonry or brick must be around the base of the building, and that materials must wrap three feet around the corner. However, it does retain other standards that more directly address the visual interest in a building. That includes things like ensuring visible entrances, affecting the scale of the building, standards related to balconies and exterior stairways, other standards related to building materials, standards related to mechanical equipment, and then also architectural style standards in the Central Planning District would continue to apply. So like I mentioned, the goal is to decrease the cost of construction and increase design flexibility without substantially impacting visual interest. So this image at the left is an example of a building that couldn't be built under the current standard. It does not have that two-foot base of masonry or brick. So you can still create good buildings, and there are other standards that continue to address some of those other concerns with these building types. The second standard is related to allowing duplexes and up to two attached single-family uses in mid-block locations, specifically in lower-density, single-family zones. And it's currently reacting to the current requirement that each unit's main entrance and garage are restricted to different streets. So it's built around the idea that these uses have to be on corners under current standards, and so we proposed the proposed amendments to change that, so it could do mid-block location while achieving a similar goal. So it really facilitates that Proposed Amendment 1A. And the way that it prevents garages from dominating the street, I've already mentioned, but the outcomes should be similar to what you would expect with an OPD, that would allow duplex uses in areas where they're not typically allowed. So for example, of things that would be allowed, the upper-left is an example of double-wide garages that are facing different streets on a corner lot. Those would be restricted to 20 feet. The upper-right image is an example of if you had stacked duplex that are sharing a double-wide or two single-wide garages, those would be allowed uses. So this would be one example of that. This would be another example of that. You could also have rear access, and it would be required if there was an alley there. Rear access, we wouldn't restrict the size because it doesn't dominate the streetscape in that case. And then we would also have the lower-right example, which would restrict, which if it's set back 15 feet, you could have more than 20 feet of combined garage face. That being said, they would still be restricted to that 60% of the total width of the facade. So you couldn't have a house that's 99% garage. It'd have to be 60%. So again, the goal is to make sure that these are uses or standards that keep compatibility while still allowing mid-block duplexes. And then finally, simplifying the waiver for townhome-style multifamily uses, specifically as it relates to a parking setback. So in the current zone, parking must be set back from streets through 15 feet of building depth. So to give an example, the diagram on the right, this black, this black is the building. That is the proposed building. It's shown as an attached side-by-side townhome that is multifamily, so you have fronts facing the front street, and then you also have a side street, so it's on a corner lot. You cannot build parking within the first 15 feet of building depth, so that is these red lines. Those are areas where parking would not be required. Parking would only be required, or would only be allowed behind those areas, which poses a problem for lots that are on the corner, where you have a unit that would need additional building space between that and the side street. So that does create a challenge. It can be waived by minor modification, but that requires additional time and process, which includes an administrative hearing and notification period. That being said, what the proposed amendment does is allows a straight waiver of that side-street lot line. So it doesn't allow a waiver of that front lot line or that front parking setback. It only allows it on the side. So you can see the difference here. As a result, it's a very limited impact. It's a very specific proposed amendment, but it really is, again, tied to facilitating those townhome-style multifamily uses, especially in areas where attached single-family uses are already allowed, and it has standards that are similar to those attached single-family uses. So it's mostly to create, to facilitate those types of uses if they are being added to neighborhoods. The third set of changes is tied to providing additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing. Again, there are three changes in this category. The first is reducing lot sizes for detached and attached, single-family and duplex uses, and that would specifically affect some zones, which are mostly lower-density, single-family zones. It does have some limited impacts in lower-density, multifamily zones as well. But generally, it would reduce lot width and lot size for RS5, RNS12, if there is rear access, and only if there's rear access, and it would reduce lot width for RM12 and RM20. For duplex and attached, single-family, it would For duplex and attached, single-family, it would reduce both lot size and lot width. The second change would to be to increase the bedroom limit for missing middle housing types outside of the university-impact area, and that would specifically be looking at multifamily, where there's currently a cap of three bedrooms for a multifamily dwelling unit. For duplex and single-family attached, there's a bedroom cap of four bedrooms for a dwelling unit. This would increase that to four and five bedrooms respectively, specifically outside of the university-impact area, so I'll show you a map of what that means in a minute. And then the final change would be to allow and encourage accessory apartments in a broader variety of contexts and to try to reduce barriers to construction. And one of the reasons we're focused on ADUs is because they're a great way to increase housing supply without substantially impacting the appearance of a neighborhood. A lot of these changes are based on those that are recommended by the AARP, which has really encouraged these in recent years, and then also by the Housing Action Committee of the Johnson County Livable Communities Group, which is part of Johnson County, includes a number of stakeholders. So changes are things such as allowing these uses in any zone that allows household living uses on any lot that has up to two dwelling units. It would remove the requirement that the unit be owner-occupied. It would remove limits on the number of bedrooms and residents. Instead, those would be capped by other standards that are in our rental code. It would allow increased size for these dwelling units as long as they're less than half the size of the primary use. It would remove the requirement for an additional parking space, and then it would also simplify some design requirements as part of that. So going into the analysis, the proposed amendments, in terms of reducing lot sizes and widths, the existing situation is that there are many lots platted prior to 1962 that are non-conforming. That is when the most substantial zoning code changed that increased the lot sizes for the first time. Best practice is to reduce minimum lot sizes that can perpetuate patterns of economic and demographic segregation, and it is also a best practice to reduce or minimize nonconformities within the zoning code. So many of these are focused on bringing these uses into compliance with the zoning code. In terms of the anticipated impacts, it would bring approximately 85% of nonconforming lots in the RS5 and RNS12 zone into compliance with the zoning code. That's around 1,600 lots. It would keep 300 lots that would remain nonconforming in these zones. A lot of those are lots that are flag lots in historic areas, but we are mostly focused on trying to bring as many in as possible. It does also provide flexibility for the arrangements of lots in new subdivisions, which includes smaller lots that will currently be allowed, especially in the RS5 zone. For example, in terms of the sort of cost reduction that this could bring, assuming land prices are around $5 a square foot, the proposed reduction for an RS5 zone could reduce the cost of construction by approximately $10,000. So especially in lower price points, that can be a significant factor in affordability, and the goal is really to focus on as many of these things as possible to enhance affordability. In addition, the image to the right is an example of units that are currently zoned RS5 that couldn't be platted today as they were platted at that time. So this is in the Morningside neighborhood. Again, it's zoned low-density, single-family residential, but they are 50-foot lot widths, 7,000-square-feet lots. They do meet our standards, but they currently couldn't be platted in this way in their current zone. In addition, it would reduce the sizes for duplexes as well. That's mostly to try and bring it into closer alignment with what's allowed in form-based zones, since form-based zones do allow duplexes in even the lowest-density residential zone that's included in those. However, it is still larger than it taking into account the current structure of our zoning code. But I did discuss previously the effect that that has on where duplexes might be allowed on existing lots, but it would also have, again, that larger impact on newly-platted areas within the community. So as an example of lots that would become conforming, the green areas are those that are currently conforming and would remain conforming, as you would expect. That is most of the areas zoned RS5 and RNS12, but there are a number of areas, shown in yellow, that are currently nonconforming but would be made conforming under the current zoning code. So like I said, they're concentrated in older neighborhoods, things like Morningside, Twain. You see them in Plum Grove, Manville Heights in the South District. These are somewhat similar to what you also see with the duplex standards as well. There are still some lots, like I said, approximately 300 that wouldn't become conforming. Those are in red. You see a lot of those in Towncrest and in the North Side. Those are where you have lots that are smaller than even the proposed standards that we're recommending, and they would remain nonconforming. But it does bring a substantial number of these nonconforming uses into compliance. The second change would be to increase the bedroom limit, as I mentioned. So specifically within the university-impact area, which is within this red boundary on the map, so it's really those areas that are close to the university. That being said, currently, the number of bedrooms are restricted for duplexes, attached, single-family, and multifamily uses citywide. So the problem with this is that the bedroom caps do limit where large households can live, pretty much limits them to detached, single-family housing, which does increase housing costs for those household types. As a result, the 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan did recommend amendments to these standards, which are imitated by the proposed amendment that we brought before you or that we're recommending. So the impacts of the proposed amendment would be to allow the construction of units for larger families outside of the university-impact area in a wider variety of housing types. In addition, it would retain the bedroom cap for the university-impact area to avoid some of the situations that caused the bedroom caps to be adopted in the first place. So it really continues to maintain the purpose that it was adopted for while allowing wider flexibility for housing types outside. The final change is related to encouraging accessory apartments in a brighter variety of contexts and reducing barriers. So ADUs have been allowed in Iowa City for quite some time, more than 40 years, but over the past 30 years, their development has been relatively limited. We've only had 52 ADUs when there has been 13,000 eligible lots for ADUs under the current code. So there are barriers within our code, and some of the barriers that have been identified by AARP are in our code, things like the owner occupancy requirement and additional parking standards. So in our 2022 Affordable Housing Action Plan, it recommended trying to promote or encourage where ADUs are allowed and expanding those. And there is also a large demand for smaller units. Approximately 36% of households in Iowa City are single-person households, and more than 40% of renter households are single-person households. So there is a demand for smaller units. So in terms of anticipated impacts, like I mentioned, with duplexes, we don't anticipate that all eligible units are suddenly going to provide ADUs, but our goal is really to encourage their development and reduce those barriers. So the 13,000 parcels that are currently eligible will remain eligible under the proposed amendment. However, there are new parcels that would be able to accommodate ADUs. We would imagine that would happen gradually like any change. That would include up to 1,400 new units allowed by expanding the zones and uses to which these may be accessory. So for example, allowing them in RNS12 zones or allowing them in other zones that allow single-family detached uses, and also allowing them accessory to duplex uses. In addition, it would allow it to 3,100 new units by removing the owner occupancy requirement. With that being said, many of the renter-occupied detached, single-family uses are located within the university-impact area, so that is something to be mindful of. But with an accessory dwelling unit with the changes proposed, it would allow standalone accessory dwelling units, and we would imagine that that's how many of these would be constructed in addition to there being other barriers to construction. Even with us trying to remove as many barriers as possible, you still have to have conforming lot sizes. You still have to, you know, meet the other standards in the code with regards to lot area, with regards to coverage standards, with regards to open space. So those standards wouldn't change. It's just allowing it an ADU if there's room for it. In addition, we would anticipate that this would allow many of these uses in areas that really do support the city's sustainability goals by increasing housing supply in those areas. We would anticipate that those are the most walkable areas of the community, so it really ties into some of our other, especially reducing the parking space that's required, really ties into some of our goals of encouraging alternative transportations to just single occupancy vehicles, cars, for example. And as part of that, you know, the city is also doing things like having our two-year free transit trial, and we really are trying to encourage these walkable communities. So it ties into those goals as well. So in terms of parcels that could allow ADUs, the green areas are areas that currently allow ADUs if their owner occupied. Under the proposed amendments, if they're renter-occupied, they could also allow an ADU. Yellow areas are new areas that would allow ADUs. Some of those are duplexes. Some of those are just zones that have not previously enabled ADU construction. So you can see that they are scattered throughout the community. A lot of them are located downtown, but the goal is to encourage ADUs throughout the community and remove as many barriers as possible. The fourth set of standards is tied to creating regulatory incentives for affordable housing, and when I'm talking about affordable housing, this is specifically focused on, for the purposes of these amendments, specifically focused on income-restricted housing that would also have rent restrictions and/or sales restrictions for owner-occupied housing. So the rest are tied, a lot of them are tied to increasing housing choice, diversity, supply, flexibility, reducing cost. This is really about regulating or regulated affordable housing. And the income and rent levels that we've determined are based on our current practice in the city, so generally, that's 80% of the area median income for owner-occupied. It's generally 60% for renter-occupied. Rents are tied to our fair housing market rents, and then our income limits are tied to HUD sales limits. So the two proposed changes are creating a density bonus for affordable housing units in conventional zones, so that would be a 20% density bonus where 20% of units are affordable housing for 20 years. It would allow additional regulatory flexibility as well, specifically tied to setbacks in building height. And then it would allow or would also, the second standard, would eliminate minimum parking requirements for affordable housing where that housing is affordable for 20 years. So it would only affect that 20% of units that are affordable or as many units as are affordable. It doesn't affect the market rate units in that development. So in terms of the impacts, a lot of these things are things that are already part of the riverfront crossings in form-based zones that were recently adopted, especially density bonuses and parking reductions, but they're not present in conventional zones. So impacts would be to provide a voluntary incentive, something that can encourage the construction of those income-restricted affordable units. So they'd be administered during the typical reviews. A lot of that would be site plan or building permit review. It may be an OPD plan or subdivision depending on what standard is being requested. And the goal of additional units in terms of the density bonus is to provide additional rents that can help offset the costs of affordable housing. Density bonuses are one of the most affordable, the most common affordable housing incentives that you see in communities, but like I said, it may also provide flexibility for setback in height standards if those are needed, depending on the circumstance. So there are some standards in the code language included in the packet that would need to be met for that. In terms of examples of what that might look like, so if you have a 20-acre, a low-density, single-family residential zone with a planned development overlay, you might have 14 acres that are available for development with a maximum residential density of five dwelling units per acre. In a conventional dwelling, in a conventional development, it'll allow around 70 market-rate homes. With the affordable housing incentive, it would allow up to 84 homes, of which 17% or 20% must be affordable to get that incentive. For a multifamily development example, if you have a 33,000-square-foot lot, that would currently allow up to 12 market-rate units in our conventional zones. If you have the affordable housing incentive, it would allow 15 units, of which three would be affordable. And the minimum parking requirements are similar, where it provides another incentive by reducing the cost of providing those affordable housing units. So it's another one of those carrots that can be provided, but again, design flexibility is the second-most common incentive that's provided for affordable housing bonuses. So what that looks like in terms of the proposed examples that I talked about in the single-family development, with 70 homes, that would require 140 parking spaces. With the affordable housing incentive, it would allow 84 homes and would require a minimum of 134 parking spaces. So those market rate units would continue to be required to provide their parking. Similarly, with the multifamily example, the 12-unit complex would require 24 parking spaces. The proposed amendment would allow 15 units with 24 parking spaces. So the goal is to reduce the cost and incentivize the construction of those income-restricted units. The final set of changes are related to addressing fair housing, and they are specifically focused on persons experiencing disabilities. The first is related to providing a reasonable accommodations process that is currently handled through disparate processes throughout our zoning code. It is something that the city is required to do by federal law. We just don't currently have a standardized process that's clear and apparent, so it's clarifying that process. The second would be to reclassify community service long-term housing uses as a residential use, and I'll talk about that, what that means more in a minute. So the first standard is that, you know, like I said, we are required to provide reasonable accommodations, but no comprehensive process exists, and it is best practice to provide it as an administrative process and try to require as few hoops as possible for persons experiencing disabilities so that it doesn't draw attention to their disability and doesn't become a hurdle. So the impact of the proposed amendment is to create a simple comprehensive process to evaluate all these requests and to reduce the need to call attention to the disability. And when I say that, for example, if someone came today before the city and said, "I really need a wheelchair ramp, but I can't comply with the current setback requirements," there are processes to reduce that. In many cases, that would require a minor modification, which requires administrative notification of surrounding neighbors, would also require an administrative hearing. So it allows a more comprehensive process that's more discreet, helps protect confidentiality as well, but it allows them to do so in all cases, depending on what that would be. So there are proposed approval criteria that I mentioned in the staff report. They're included on the right here, but it's really ensuring that this is something that's needed. The second change would be to reclassify community service long-term housing uses as a residential use. So currently, these uses are housing with supportive services for persons with a disability that are owned by a nonprofit. Currently, they're treated as institutional uses rather than residential uses, so as a result, they're more restrictive in where they're allowed. It's similar to what is current for assisted group living uses, and it is best practice to regulate housing for persons with disabilities like similarly-sized household living uses again. So really, what this does, by treating these uses as residential, we would strike the community service long-term housing use as a distinct category, and they would be allowed as a household living use, which would simplify the process by which they're allowed, and it would also expand where they may be located. The difference is like assisted group living, again, they're allowed in intensive commercial zones. They would no longer be allowed in that zone, which we have determined isn't appropriate for household living uses. It would also eliminate some standards that are different for this type of use. So currently, the standards have reduced parking requirements and increased or higher-density allowances for these zones. It would, again, treat them like any other multifamily use. If it was a multifamily building, it'd be treated like a single-family use if it's in a single-family building. So it really depends on which kind of building the household use was located. And currently, there are two properties that are in this category. There are only two. They're both owned by Shelter House, and they would become legal nonconforming uses. As I noted previously, it is best practice to create as few nonconformities as possible within the zoning code, but in this case, the purpose of treating housing for persons with disabilities similarly to residential uses outweighs that nonconforming, the creation of a nonconforming use, in staff's opinion. And we did discuss this with Shelter House leadership, and these uses would be allowed to continue as they currently are allowed. They would become a nonconforming use. If the use was terminated, it wouldn't be allowed. But as they're currently allowed, you know, if these buildings were sold, they would become nonconforming uses anyway because it has to be owned by a nonprofit under its current structure. So this would kind of eliminate a lot of those distinctions that are currently in the code. The proposed amendment also does specify that supportive services that are accessory The proposed amendment also does specify that supportive services that are accessory to a use and that only serve the residents of a building would be allowed in a household residential zone. So on a smaller scale, you could imagine a case where someone has household help that lives with them and that provides assistance. Or in a larger use, it could be a case where, you know, there's supportive services that help them live within their housing unit, whether that be employment services or other things. However, as soon as people come from offsite to use those services, it would become a broader separate use that would no longer be allowed. So in terms of the way that these were constructed, all of these are based largely on national best practices. So we really did look a lot at best practices that, or we looked at organizations that have a really broad scope in the way that they look at housing affordability, at equity. One of them being the American Planning Association. We also looked at information by the National Association of Counties and then also American, the AARP, the Association for Retired Persons. And what they did is really look at what's working throughout the nation, what's not working in terms of enhancing equity, enhancing affordability. And a lot of these are based on that. So in terms of equity and in terms of the American Planning Association, we really focused on the Equity and Zoning Policy Guide. They have a number of different recommendations with regards to zoning codes, things like allowing broad range of housing types, reducing minimum lot sizes, allowing ADUs, treating assisted group living and housing for persons with disabilities like residential uses, allowing administrative approval of reasonable accommodations. Really, a lot of those things that try to further equity within the community. But we also, like I said, paid attention to the National Association of Counties, which provides specific recommendations for counties, for individual counties, based on their characteristics. Within Johnson County, they classify us as a high-growth, high-cost community. So a lot of their housing policies are focused on making it easier to build small moderately priced homes, making the development process simpler and shorter, which would be things like streamlining approval processes in this code. And then also expanding vouchers or income supports for low-income renters, which ties into things like our incentives for affordable housing. In addition, as I already mentioned, the AARP is also very interested specifically as it relates to affordable housing. So a lot of our accessory dwelling unit standards are tied to those standards and to recommended policies by our Johnson County Livable Communities Group, which is really well-aligned with the AARP. So they did identify some poison pills for ADUs that really restrict the development of these uses. Those are things like owner occupancy requirements, parking requirements, conditional use permits, which we don't have, and discretionary standards related to design or neighborhood character. So those are things that we looked at. And they did note within their documents, you know, that the practical impact specifically for owner occupancy requirements is to inhibit the construction of ADUs. And they really point to recent changes that we've seen, especially California and Oregon's enabling legislation that's statewide, but also in Seattle's 2019 local code revisions. A lot of them have moved away from rental restrictions. And we've even seen it in communities such as Ann Arbor recently. We also did recommend, we are recommending these proposed amendments because we do believe that they are currently consistent with our current comprehensive plan. And that's really how we focused in on which amendments we proposed. So our vision statement for our comprehensive plan is creating attractive and affordable housing for all people that is the foundation of a healthy, safe, and diverse neighborhoods throughout our city. They do have strategies and goals such as ensuring a mix of housing types, encouraging development on smaller lots, ensuring a balance of housing types, promoting small lot and infill development and supporting infill development in areas where infrastructure is already in place. The comprehensive plan also does have a future land use map that shows where different uses might be allowed. Within most of the community, it notes that it's appropriate for two to eight dwelling units per acre. And that is the lowest density future land use designation. So we did take that into effect as we're looking at our proposed amendments as well. And within the comprehensive plan, it really does stress that even with these density limits, that a variety of housing types should be encouraged throughout all areas of the community. So it ties into the comprehensive plan. And as Anne mentioned, it ties into our previous planning efforts since 2016 that have been ongoing with many of these proposed amendments being included in those adopted plans as well. So with that, we did receive seven pieces of correspondence that you have received, either in the agenda packet, three of them, or four that were submitted late. The late items are included at your spot. They've also been emailed to you separately. And with, considering that input, considering this analysis, staff does recommend that Title 14 zoning be adopted as illustrated in Attachment 2 of the staff report to enhance land use regulations related to improving housing choice, housing supply, increasing housing supply, and encouraging affordability overall. And really trying to fulfill those previously adopted plans. In terms of next steps, upon a recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, a public hearing would be scheduled for consideration by city council. The earliest possible time that could occur is September 5th. That would be the public hearing. And then they would have a third consideration and possible adoption by October 3rd at the earliest. So that's really the timeline that's possible. Those are the proposed amendments, and I am happy to answer any questions from the board since I know it's a lot of information.
Thank you, Kirk. That was very well done. I think it was easy for people to follow along and to understand, so kudos for that. Now is the portion of the meeting where it's opportunity for commissioners to ask questions of staff on this presentation. I'll go ahead and start out. I got about a half dozen questions for you, Kirk. Well, first off, what was the date on the comprehensive plan? It just seems like that's been around for a long time now. I'm wondering.
Yeah, it was adopted in 2013. The city is currently in the process of developing an RFP for a comprehensive plan update as well, since it's been about 10 years, which is pretty standard.
All right. On amendment number one, the increased flexibility for range of housing types, did you folks, or why didn't you just think about expanding the use of RS 12 since that allows all the multiple housing types that you're talking about? Isn't that just an easier way to do it by expanding that?
So that is a possible amendment that could happen. The problem is that would not comply with the current comprehensive plan since the current comprehensive plan specifies that two to eight dwelling units per acre would be allowed. So really what staff focused on were amendments that comply with our current plan, and that would not.
Good. Thank you. Amendment two, the modified design standards. That two-foot masonry or brick requirement from the ground up, that's essentially the same as what it is for single-family residences, isn't it? There's no requirement for a single family to have anything on.
Yeah, there is no requirement for that.
So just making it the same standards?
That is correct.
Okay. Amendment number three, provide additional flexibility to enhance the supply of housing. Why increase the number of bedrooms when demographics show that family size is significantly shrinking? It seems to me contrary to the reality because when family sizes are shrinking, but we want more bedrooms, being this is Iowa City, the first fear comes in, "Oh, we're going to fill it up with a bunch of people. So now we're going to be renting, you know, rooms essentially." So that was my first fear. So I guess that's my question with that.
Yeah.
How has that come about?
That's a great question. It's really tied to the fact that there's an unnecessary restriction for different housing types that we see, especially outside of the core. So that is a very real concern, especially in that university impact area. That's why that's excluded from the proposed amendment. But we have had examples where, for example, Habitat for Humanity in the South District has proposed attached single-family uses with five bedrooms. And currently, that's not allowed under our code. And a lot of the times, that's tied to, especially intergenerational households, different standards that aren't tied to your standard nuclear household. So we see it in intergenerational households. We also see it with often larger families that just can't find the housing in Iowa City. And so a lot of those people have to either find a detached single-family home or move to a different community where that might be allowed.
And concurrently with that issue, if we increase the number of bedrooms, but we decrease lot size, where are the kids going to play? They're not going to have a yard to play in.
Sure. So the city does have open space requirements and rear setback requirements that would continue to be in effect. Those standards are intended to create room for children to play, and that's why those were adopted, for that livable, usable space.
And then on the university impact area, when was that determined? Because looking at that map, it just looks too small. It doesn't look reflective of the reality of where students are living now.
Yes, I believe that was adopted in 2012. That was specifically tied to parking standards initially. There are some other standards that are also tied to the university impact area. But that was what was determined at the time as the area most impacted by the university.
Do you recall how that was determined? Was it just sort of like somebody drew lines, thinking this is where most of the students live?
So I believe it was tied to the zoning districts at the time, specifically limiting, limited to areas that aren't those lower-density, single-family zones. As far as I could tell from the zoning map, that was how that was determined.
Just seems to me it needs to be updated. On the accessory dwelling unit issue, isn't the real barrier to the creation of accessory dwelling units, and I'm sorry, on the present, on your presentation, did you say 52 ADUs have been constructed in the past, how many years?
Since 1994, I believe, so approximately 30 years.
30 years. Isn't the real barrier the cost of construction, particularly detached ADUs? Because if it's something that people had a need for, 52 in 30 years, that's like one and a half a year. So the demand clearly isn't there. So my first thought is affordability because intergenerational households would jump all over this because it would seem to be the answer to things. So do you have any? This is more an opinion question. I don't want to give you an opinion question.
Yeah.
Is there any evidence to show that the real barrier is construction cost?
So the cost of construction and attaining financing are barriers to ADUs. But staff really has made its recommendations based on the fact that we don't want the zoning code to be that barrier to the construction of ADUs. So it could be that some of it's tied to that. It could be that some of it's tied to the fact that our current standards are unnecessarily limiting that construction.
And then given the construction cost issue and then the, maybe the difficulty in getting loans to build those, isn't this really just an opportunity, just in practice, what could happen? I'm a big ADU fan, but I'm just trying to look at what actually happened. Won't it just be an expansion of houses that are used as rentals? Because the only people that can afford to build the ADs are the people, these investors, who have the deep pockets so they could come right in, buy a house in a neighborhood, and immediately put an ADU in it. Now they have two rentals on the same parcel. Because my concern is about neighborhood integrity. I've been in Iowa City since 1985. It's pretty obvious where the rentals are and where they're not. And neighborhoods start declining when there's a lot of rentals in the houses because frankly, they're just not maintained to the standards that people maintain their private dwelling. And so it's a, how's, it's a neighborhood deterioration issue in addition to a lot of other issues. And so I think it's very important to be respectful of people who want to maintain the integrity of their neighborhood and also the predictability. Like if you, you know, the house is the biggest expense you're ever going to have in your lifetime. So if you spend everything in it to buy your house, and now the house on both sides of you are rentals with rental ADUs, now that person's, they're feeling like, "I couldn't predict that coming." So my question is, is not the biggest market for ADs going to be these investor organizations that are going to purchase these properties? And that's just another way to get another rental on there?
That's a possibility. Really, what staff was focused on is especially increasing the supply of housing with that one and then making sure that the zoning code is not the barrier to that.
Now, I love the ADU concept because I'm a big fan of intergenerational housing.
Sure.
And so I don't want that to be misconstrued. So those are my questions. Others, commissioners, questions for staff on this presentation?
I had two of the same questions that you asked already. The number of rooms, the number of bedrooms, I just don't see how. Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I had two of the same questions. I don't understand how increasing the number of bedrooms will create more affordable housing. And also, I want to know if we have more houses with more bedrooms. Are, is there a way to ensure that those are going to be owned by families? Or are they going to be rented to multiple people?
Sure. So. Sorry, what was your first question?
So I guess my main concern was number three. And I want to know, because I have the same concern that Mike said, it seems to me that this will create more rentals instead of more affordable housing that people can buy.
Sure. So with bedrooms, it really is a matter of specifically accommodating different housing types, or, excuse me, different household arrangements within different household types. So currently, single-family homes don't have a cap on the number of bedrooms that they can have. It's just everything else that has a cap on the number of bedrooms that they can have. So single-family homes have no cap, and they won't have any cap. And so those are currently the only dwelling types that can accommodate larger families. However, those are also more expensive than other housing types such as multifamily and attached, single-family, or duplex uses. We have gotten requests for some of those larger uses in more affordable housing types, and those haven't been able to move forward under our current code. And you had asked about restricting owner occupancy or renter occupancy. The zoning code doesn't really consider owner or renter occupancy, except in the case of accessory dwelling units. So you could imagine a situation where, even if it's owner occupied currently, you could still live in a situation where you have two units next to you. They each have an accessory dwelling unit. You know, you might feel the same way that you would if there are two renter households with two accessory dwelling units there, but it's the same outcome. The zoning code doesn't typically consider that. Usually, that's our rental code that tries to address those situations.
I'd like you to just briefly talk about how these proposed changes, how they line up against some of the things that are in the form-based code. It seems to me that they're quite similar and that you're doing some things that provide more flexibility, which is what I see you get out of the form-based code. And also, when we're talking about ADUs, the neighborhood I think of is the peninsula that was deliberately designed to include, you know, multiple living arrangements in one, in one building. I mean, there are a lot of apartments over garages or on upper floors out there. And are they ADUs? What are they if they are not? I mean, when you said 30 in the last, or however many in the last 30 years, I thought, I mean, the image of the peninsula came to mind. And I think that that's a neighborhood that was designed specifically to have denser housing.
That is correct. Approximately a third of the ADUs that have been permitted, or 16 of them, were in the peninsula neighborhood.
Okay.
And your first question was about.
About form-based code and how these changes.
Sure. So these, in terms of the form-based code, these standards are significantly closer to what's allowed in them. So the new minimum, or the proposed minimum lot sizes for RS 5 and RS 8 are similar to what's allowed in the T3 or this suburban transect, neighborhood edge and neighborhood general zones for house small and house large. Duplexes are also allowed in all the T3 zones, both side-by-side and stacked if you get into the T3 general. So the uses that are allowed, or that are being proposed for the RS 5 and RS 8 zone are similar to what's allowed in a T3 neighborhood edge. There is no corner requirement in that zone, in the form-based zones. In terms of other changes, the duplex uses are still significantly larger in an RS 5 zone than is allowed in the neighborhood edge zone. But the uses that are allowed are similar, and single-family lot sizes would be similar.
Thank you.
Maggie?
My first question has to do with a question I had on July 5th. And when I read the minutes, I felt like, could you explain that a little bit? So on July 5th, I asked a question about, basically, what we're talking about is somebody coming in and tearing down an affordable, single-family house and, you know, making it higher cost and more people living on the land. And the response had something, you said something about covenants. And the response had something, you said something about covenants. And I don't understand what covenants are.
So, private covenants are another barrier to different housing types in communities. Those are things, those are legal restrictions that run with the land. You would often think of homeowner associations as having them. Often, they say only single-family detached housing can be built here. That's a barrier to housing that isn't touched by our zoning code. And that's something that's not considered here because they do expire after 21 years unless they're renewed. So they can change over time, but typically, quite a few areas have private covenants that restrict to single-family detached only.
Which would be in outline areas? So they're more so in outline areas?
Yeah, most subdivisions passed. I mean, I would guess maybe even in the 60s probably is where they start becoming common. You find them in older subdivisions as well. These are also things where you hear about racial covenants that restrict where persons of color can live. It's similar to that, but this restricts it to single-family detached only.
So when we're looking at those maps, we don't know what areas might have those covenants and might not allow any, or some of the ideas that we're presenting tonight.
That is correct.
Okay. The other thing that came from that same question was, the neighborhoods close to downtown have historic and conservation districts. And I understood it to say that it would not allow tear downs because of the lot size. Can you say more about that?
Sure. In our local historic districts and local conservation districts, the only place a demolition of an existing structure would be allowed if it's deteriorated beyond repair. So a demolition in a historic or conservation district is unlikely.
Okay. And I just want to clarify that there are some historic and conservation districts that are outside the University Impact area. I think of Longfellow.
I believe that's correct in Longfellow. I don't know how far outside it extends.
Yeah, I'd have to look at a map, but you're probably correct.
I'm pretty sure.
And even east of, yeah, Longfellow and Rundell and those areas over there on the east side.
And there are none on the west side.
And then my, the numbers just caught me on the ADUs. And being in the north side, so possibly there could be over 2,000 accessory units in the University Impact area? There were 3,100, and I took it to be 75%.
Yeah, it might be that 75% of units that are allowed, or that are. One more. Approximately 75% of new units that would be allowed by removing the owner occupancy requirement would be in the University Impact area. That is correct.
Okay. All right, thank you.
But they still have to meet the regulations. I mean, there's a lot of small lots on the north side that I would challenge anybody to build another unit. I mean, you can't do it because you still have to have the setbacks and the.
Yeah, that's also part of what I think comes from your previous question that you had asked about private covenants and then also about smaller lot sizes. Lots do have to be conforming, lots to have an ADU. They do have to meet their open space standards. They have to meet setbacks. They have to meet coverage standards. So there are a number of standards that are in place to ensure a high-quality place, to ensure that rear yards still exist, those sorts of things. Those have to continue to be met. This analysis did not look at that because to do so, you'd have to look on an individual lot by individual lot basis, calculate the amount that's covered by a building, et cetera. So.
So that 75% is just the renter, just taking out the owner occupied?
That's the percent of single-family and duplex uses in areas close to the university that are rental, based on our recent rental. It's not exactly the University Impact area. It's similar to it. I just use that as my proxy because rental units change all the time. So it's hard to come up with those numbers. Similar with the map, I don't show you where all the rental permits are because they could change the next day.
I wanted to speak to the private covenant issue too, just to clarify. Those would be maybe applicable upon redevelopment of a site. But the initial development of, you know, greenfield land, those covenants usually aren't put in place until after the. This one's on, okay.
You just have to lean in.
Okay. So private covenants are usually only put in place after development has been constructed. So it wouldn't apply to the initial development of a greenfield site with a new subdivision. They would potentially be implicated if someone wanted to redevelop an existing lot. So I'm not quite sure.
But there could be developments out there that have existing covenants now that would say, you know, all the houses in this subdivision have to be single-family houses. Is that not right?
Potentially. I have not seen them. I think they're kind of a historic relic. I haven't seen them very recently. But again, the city's not involved in approving those or enforcing those. But I just want to make sure that it's clear that they're imposed usually by the developer after the development's been built. So if the developer wants to put, you know, duplexes in the middle of a block under these proposed amendments, private covenants wouldn't restrict that necessarily. You know, a developer puts them in place to preserve the development that they put in place, essentially. If that makes sense.
Right. I think I'm following you.
Jeff?
Okay, well, going late makes my questions a lot shorter. I got a question on the rear access requirement. If there's an alleyway on a duplex. So let's say a duplex is put on a corner lot that has an alleyway access. As a result, does that require that their garage access is off the alleyway? Or can you?
That is correct. So if there's an alley, they would be required to use that alley for their access. And that's similar to what we require in a lot of commercial zones, for example.
So thinking like the, like, I grew up in the Goostown neighborhood. So Goostown neighborhood structure is no longer viable. It gets redeveloped with a duplex. A lot of alleyways up there, so then that becomes their required garage access. Is that right?
Correct.
That's it. Any other questions for staff from commissioners? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Everybody is limited to five minutes. Please make your addresses to the commission, not to members of the audience. If you have questions, please ask those questions of staff after the meeting, and they can take your name and information and answer them later. And the public comment is not an opportunity for back and forth. It's for you to share your views and opinions with the commission. So when you come up, just please state your name, sign in, and I will be timing everybody for five minutes.
Sure. Hi, my name's Jim Throgmorton. Among other things, I'm co-chair of the Northside Neighborhood Association Steering Committee. And I've just asked Kirk to distribute a longer written statement of my comments. So at the commission's July 5 meeting, the city staff proposed a series of major amendments, which Kirk has just gone back through. They're designed to improve housing choice, increase housing supply, and encourage affordability. And just on Friday, staff issued a longer, more detailed and complicated supplement to that initial report. And I've spent much of the last couple of days reading it, as other people have been doing it, trying to digest it. On Sunday, co-chair Sherri DeGraw and I guided a zoning matters community forum about the staff's proposed changes. Roughly 50 Iowa Cityans, some of whom are here right now, attended the event at the library. Attendees asked many questions and offered many comments about the proposed amendments. The questions and comments ranged from purely technical ones like, what is an ADU? To the expressly political ones. The technical comments revealed that most residents do not understand zoning processes and language. The political comments revealed a very broad range of political views. I commend the city staff for carefully considering how to promote the development of more affordable housing through the use of zoning tools. I find myself agreeing with and supporting most of the proposed changes. Many of them seek to open up existing future conventional residential zoning districts, especially RS5, to a more diverse range of housing types. Doing so is a progressive response to historical evidence that in cities all over the country, conventional residential zoning has been exclusionary by design. However, the proposed amendments are the most significant alterations to the zoning code in nearly 20 years. Changes of this magnitude and complexity deserve to be carefully studied and discussed by all affected stakeholders. To the best of my knowledge, there were no consultations with the general public or neighborhood associations prior to issuance of the proposed amendments. And to the best of my knowledge, there have been no reports about them in the local news media. We on the Northside Steering Committee think it is extremely important for the commission to defer voting on the proposed amendments tonight and to think of ways in which a broader community discussion about the proposed changes can be conducted. And we strongly believe that neighborhood associations must be recognized as key stakeholders in this process. I have suggestions about how you could proceed, if you'd like to hear it, but I think your time is limited, so I'll move right along. So let me turn from process to substance. We in the Northside Association find it difficult to fully assess how the amendments would affect the north side and other neighborhoods in the UIA. However, we think some of the effects might be harmful. This concern largely stems from the fact that the housing market in these neighborhoods is profoundly affected by the intense demand for off-campus student housing. Although all of the UIA neighborhoods are affected by this demand, the particular effects vary from neighborhood to neighborhood. In each case, it is important to account for the social and material reality of the neighborhoods. We have recently completed an inventory of property in the Northside neighborhood. This inventory of 994 properties reveals that the north side is already quite diverse in housing types, ages, ownership, and assessed values. The written statement provides detail about what I just said. Most important, the 2023 assessed values of the 467, quote, "single-family owner-occupied" properties ranged from $76,000 to $1.1 million. Almost 14% of the single-family properties are assessed in the 100,000's range or below. 46 are assessed in the 200,000 range. Moreover, the inventory reveals that 175 limited liability companies, LLCs, and other incorporated entities own property in the north side. These private enterprises own and presumably rent 27% of the properties classified as being single-family owner-occupied. Weird. How could that be? One individual's various LLCs own at least 56 properties in the neighborhood. Again, details are available in my written statement. As I read the staff's August 2 supplementary memo, the possibility of perverse effects applies primarily to the proposals concerning accessory dwelling units, especially items 3C, 4A, and 4B in combination. With this mix of amendments and incentives, especially the removal of the requirement that one unit be owner-occupied, private investors are likely to sweep up properties in the RNS12 parts of the north side in Goostown. They're likely to demolish older, lower-cost, quote, owner, well, owner-occupied structures, and they are likely to replace them with larger rental structures coupled with rentalable ADUs. The overall supply of housing would increase, but the supply of affordable owner-occupied housing would shrink. So, given this, I strongly oppose applying the staff's proposed ADU changes to the RS8 and RNS12 parts of the Northside neighborhood. There's a lot in the proposals I like, but I don't like that for the unique reasons associated with neighborhoods in the UIA. There's much more I can say, but you all don't have enough time to hear it all. So thank you for listening.
Jim, actually, since you're speaking on behalf of an organization and speaking for those people, you get a total of eight minutes, so you have. You have a minute and 40 seconds left to go.
Are you speaking on behalf of the group, or are group members going to?
We had an email conversation about this. We didn't have enough time to coordinate the final elements of what I said. What I have said is very consistent with the conversations I've had with other members of the steering committee, with neighbors who attended that forum on Sunday, and with many other people I've talked to in the neighborhood. Does it formally represent the Northside neighborhood? I'd say not.
Okay. I think our, the bylaws say if you're representing the group and thereby other people aren't going to speak, you get more time, but yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Who's ever next? Just come up, please state your name and sign in, and then you have five minutes.
I'm Lorraine Bowens, and I cover a lot of, I check off a lot of categories. I currently live in Windsor Ridge, but I spent 30 years in the Longfellow area on South Governor Street, from Burlington to Bowery.
Can you make sure that the mic is a little tilted?
I can't get that over. Okay.
Thank you.
Do you need me to start over?
No.
Okay. I serve in a lot of capacities in different things. I am a member of the Johnson County livable communities. I am not representing them. These are my personal views. Although I am 100% behind the ADUs. I also lived in a historic house. Our house was built in 1864 on South Governor Street. And there used to be a lot of duplexes and rooming houses on that section of street. When we moved in in 1985, it was 80% rental. At one, or it was 80% rental at one time, I want to say around 2,000, or no, maybe about 2,000. Many of those have been converted from duplexes and rooming houses to single-family homes. We did ours. It was a duplex when we bought it. The house next door to us, which was the church grotto, was a triplex. It had a unit in the garage, and it was a duplex house. So they can be made to be beautiful. And, but I want to preserve the historic buildings we left. I worked for the city engineering department in 1978, and I'm an old-house junkie, I will tell you that. It broke my heart to see all the historic houses on Johnson and Van Buren and all those places just demolished for housing for students. And we used to have to do some surveying and stuff around there, so it was hard for me sometimes. So I would like to see if historic areas, I also worked with Ann Frericks, to make Longfellow, the South Governor and Lucas Street, one of this. I think it was the second conservation district. So I am really into this. I'm, you know, put a lot of time and effort in keeping these historic neighborhoods historic. I would really like, and, but they can have ADUs. They can be converted back to duplexes and things and not ruin the integrity. But we have to be very careful. And like, the conservation districts and the historic districts all have very strict guidelines. And I mean, I just wanted to change my front porch and had to go before the historic commission and do everything right. So, but I would like to see the conservation and historic areas owner-occupied, to help preserve that. Because Governor Street, when we moved in, was a distressed neighborhood, and our property taxes were nothing, basically. And when we left, they had gone up from, I think it was like $700 a year in '85. a year in eighty-five, to around over six thousand, I think, when we left. So because the neighborhood, the owner-occupied's, really, and even when they were rentals and they were owner-occupied, they still looked nice. They took care of them. So that's one thing I'd like to suggest. The other one, and part of the reason there is not more ADUs, is we didn't, we had a one-story garage, one-stall garage. Our lot was a third of an acre. We wanted, we built, we wanted to build a carriage house because everybody along our alley had carriage houses because we backed up to Summit Street. We couldn't build a carriage house because it was non-conforming, and by city code. So when we did build our large garage, which was twenty-six by forty, we put frost footing in thinking sometime we are going to go in and argue about it, and that would be the place where my parents would move into when they retired. Unfortunately, they never did move up here, and things got too pricey, we couldn't afford to build. But on larger lots, you can make a carriage house and make it look beautiful for an ADU. Encourage some outside-the-box ideas. And then, the other thing, covenants. When a subdivision is developed, they develop lots, they develop where the roads are going to go and things like that.
Time's up, Elaine.
Okay. Can I get, well?
Actually, you got extra time because I forgot to start my timer, so you do.
Well, let me explain what covenants are. I'm a realtor now, and along with other things, I also work with seniors. A covenant is when a developer gets a plot of land, they subdivide it, they put in the streets and everything, and then they decide what, what buildings look like in there. The covenant does not last forever, I believe. Is it twenty or twenty-two years, Carol? Do you know? How long, usually twenty or twenty-two years. And then they are renewable twice for eleven years, and then they're gone. I live in Windsor Ridge. We no longer have covenants. Our house was built in nineteen-ninety-six. But it's for the neighborhood to have kind of a uniformed design, so.
Thank you, Elaine.
They usually don't have them on old ones. But there are some changes to Medicaid coming down. The state is redoing, and that is a member of AARP advocacy team, so if I can speak on that.
Afraid not.
Anyway, there's some changes coming down in Medicaid, where nursing homes in Iowa are, we lost twenty-three last year. We've lost six so far. The one in Iowa City is almost being shut down, and they're going to push for.
Thank you.
Multi-generation.
Not sure that we finished that yet. My name is Donald McFarlane. I live on Summit Street. I was the founder of the Summit Street Historic Neighborhood Association, which is a carve-out from Longfellow. And I strongly endorse the thought that you should not vote on this tonight until you've had a chance to talk to the neighborhoods. Why should you talk to the neighborhoods? Well, the motivation for this change does not come from reality. It comes from theory. It comes from theories that stem back fifty, sixty, seventy years ago, and by and large have never been proved to be either right or not right. But I like to live in this town because of its vibrancy. And its vibrancy comes from young people who come to this town. They come as students. We need student housing. How much student housing do we need? Enough for twenty-six thousand students. After that, we need married student housing. And after that, we need young faculty housing. And after that, we need senior faculty housing, plus all of the other people in town. So these constituency groups were never mentioned. You never mentioned students. You never mentioned neighborhoods. You never mentioned historic districts. You almost never mentioned conservation. You mentioned two or three national organizations, but what you didn't say is, we've looked at a survey of X number of college towns, because college towns are very, very different from other towns for the reasons I've just said. Why haven't you gone to Ames? Why haven't you gone to Champaign-Urbana, et cetera? That's the place to go through. All their planning standards are published, they're all on the web. Go and have a look at them and see if there's something there that's better than we've got. Don't go to some theory from an organization somewhere that's never actually proven that. I'm not quite sure if there is a constituency for affordable housing. When I was young, I bought a house. It wasn't affordable. It was terrifying. It was way beyond my imagination. I couldn't think I could possibly own that house. But we did it because we wanted to live in a beautiful house. We did it because it was in a beautiful neighborhood. We did it because a beautiful neighborhood, we thought we would invest in that property, and eventually it would become a family asset. And all of those things have become true. The house is in RS5. On the map, that's a little hard to understand the map, but I think you're saying our street is going to be rezoned for duplexes. Why? Beautiful old houses? Why would you convert them to duplexes? The answer is that young people who want to buy the best possible house that they can, even though it appears to be unaffordable, will not come to Iowa City. Where will they go to? Coralville, North Liberty, Solon, wherever. They won't want to buy a house on Summit Street, which is moderately expensive, because of the probability that house prices will decline and not rise. They will not have a family asset if they buy a house on Summit Street, because some theory tells us that our big, beautiful houses should actually be duplexes. Thank you.
Thank you, Donald.
Thank you. Sorry to keep you waiting.
Hi, I'm Wally Plotnick, 430 North Gilbert Street. I'm here not as part of a group. I'm not part of any organized group. I'm a Democrat. And while I'm, while I'm stealing other people's lines, no one ever went broke under, or overestimating the avarice of corporate landlords in Iowa City. So I ask you to keep that in mind when you're offering the possibility for them to double their money on a lot. But the first thing I'd like to say, I'd like you to consider postponing this vote. Get in touch with the neighborhoods. I served on planning and zoning during the last writing of this code and during the previous development of all the district plans. What some regard as poison pills in that code were really carefully thought out. We regarded them as features rather than bugs. So AARP disagrees with that, but we had a consensus of folks who did agree that they were features, not bugs. The first question is, if this is indeed about affordable housing, I failed somewhere to find the numbers, the results that are, we're going to get from this. When we have a plan, I like that. That's great. I like to see what the plan's goals are. Increase on affordable housing, it's a little vague for me. So at some point from staff, it'd be great to hear, with this plan, we foresee X percent increase in affordable housing. That'd be a good feature. Going on, like you mentioned, the UI impact zone. I live in it. Seems like I'm going to be immune from quite a few of these things, but that's not the issue. What I see this doing is the expanded bedrooms. What you're doing is expanding the UI impact zone, not shielding the impact zone. So I'm going to keep it short. The duplexes on the corners was really carefully worked on, thought out, talked about, discussed. And again, we saw that as a feature, not a bug. Asking, asking the theoretical question, how many duplexes on the block is okay? If you've got the corners, and now you've got it in the middle, and then you've got one between the middle and the corners, well, that's a different block. So with accessory, houses in the back, it's going to make a serious impact on any neighborhood. So please consider postponing this and going through some of the processes of community engagement before you settle down on your final proposal for this, because there's a lot of good ideas in there, but there are some with a lot of unintended consequences. Thank you.
Thanks, Wally.
Good evening. My name is Greg Girdas. I'm rather diverse. I live in mosquito flats, but I, my wife and I have a rental property in Goose Town and a rental property on Summit Street. One of the things that's apparently happened over the last ten years is that there's been a trend away from this idea that we were going to preserve neighborhoods. I remember when this whole controversy about conservation districts and historic districts and all of those things came into play, and the idea was that we wanted to preserve the neighborhoods because they were attractive to people, and that's where people wanted to live. Now it seems like we're getting away from that, especially with these auxiliary dwelling units, which apparently can be built in most zones, including conservation zones and historic preservation zones. I tried to find out some answers to some questions. For example, do historic preservation requirements, construction requirements apply to these things? Are there any design standards to these things which are built in historic or conservation zones? The answer appears to be no, because that would be an impediment or an obstruction to expanding housing. Now, the overall, the overall principle here seems to be one of density. Density has now become good. But that's a big leap. A lot of people have chosen to leave Iowa City, to build in North Liberty or Tiffin or Solon or a variety of other places because they have been able to find desirable places to live and raise their family. Chief among that is non-density. These owner-occupiers are building in RS5 zones. So I ask you to keep in mind that you've got competition out there. If you make this less desirable for families, they've got other places to go, and that's what they will do. They're already doing that. I think the objective should be to bring them back, not drive more out. Couple other comments and questions. Group homes, a few weeks or maybe months now, I'm getting older and time flies. There was several articles in the paper about halfway houses. So what's a group home? Is a halfway house or a housing for people getting out of prison a group home? I don't know. Perhaps that is something that we want to address. Again, we're seeking to make this a desirable community. Lastly, and I'm going to sit down, be careful what you wish for, or at least staff should be careful what you wish for. I see and heard the examples of Portland and San Francisco being mentioned. Obviously, if you read, especially the New York Times, the Washington Post, there's a great deal of coverage about how those zoning and accessible housing ordinances in those communities have failed and have given the exact opposite result. Read an article this week where Minneapolis, which famously outlawed single-family zoning in the last few years, is now rethinking its position because developers have abandoned it and are going to St. Paul and adjacent suburbs that don't have those restrictions. So tread lightly. We've got a good community. It's attractive to people. That's why they come here. Don't put anything in front of them that deters that or detracts from the desirability that we all enjoy. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Greg.
Good evening. Ellen McCabe, Iowa City, and with the Housing Trust Fund of Johnson County. Diversity in housing options can help make more housing more affordable. In addition, further incentives to add housing that is affordable need to be put in place. I work with developers every day who want to create housing that is affordable. We can work to lower the barriers that they face, including the design standards. It may not sound like brick on the facade is an issue, but the developers express to me that every single aspect of the process adds cost. The Housing Trust Fund supports changes that will help the estimated thirteen-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty households with low incomes in Iowa City, who are spending more than thirty percent of their income on their housing, and that makes them cost-burdened by their housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellen. Who's ever next?
Hi, my name is Tim Flagle. I represent a few different, or like, I am individually a student at the University of Iowa, of which we have spoken a lot about. I'm also a homeowner in the Northside. I want to say unanimously that I believe that the proposed changes to the zoning codes will benefit not just me as a homeowner in a certain neighborhood, but me as a student. I have a young family. We are trying to grow that young family, and we might be priced out of our neighborhood because of the lack of affordable housing in that neighborhood. The zoning changes put forth today would allow for an increased diverse amount of housing, whether that's renting or owning, that would let us stay in that neighborhood that we want to stay in. These are evidence-based policies that have time and time been shown in rigorous, peer-reviewed articles to improve outcomes in certain neighborhoods. A lot of the opposition I've heard today are people who are speaking out to continue to have exclusionary zoning for the purpose of excluding other people, mostly students, of which, you know, the city is made off of students. A lot of the comments I've heard are, we don't want students in our neighborhoods. I'll press there.
Thank you, Tim. Who's ever next? Anybody else like to speak?
Hi, my name is Bob Birchfield. We've owned our home on Muscatine Avenue for over forty-nine years. It's, the neighborhood has always been a mix of students, houses that were, are rented as homes, and longtime homeowners. And I was a student here. I love students here. I'm not anti-student. I object to the process that's been used to rush this, these amendments through October. That's a few months away for such a massive change. I object to most of the provisions in the proposals, but what I find most objectionable is the Orwellian language that's been used to deceive and distract from what's really being done here. Or maybe I should say Trumpian these days. Or maybe I should say Trumpian these days. You know, who's not for affordable housing? We're all for that. But we know that in truth, what this really does is allow developers to continue to make more money. I generally don't, you know, developers that aren't living in these neighborhoods. Students are living in these neighborhoods, it's the developers who are not living in the neighborhoods. I don't think I heard anything tonight that wasn't directed to what developers can do. I didn't hear anything about what those of us in our neighborhoods can do to maintain viable and stable neighborhoods. You know, I don't generally attend these meetings or speak, because I don't expect this city staff, or even this commission, or the city council to be any different than the ones that throughout the years have allowed developers to profit by attacking our downtown and our neighborhoods. But I just wish for once that you'd be honest about what you're really doing.
Thank you, Bob. Whoever would like to speak next?
Hi, my name's Sharon DeGra, and I live in the North Side. And a little over a week ago, we decided to, well, after the July 5th Planning and Zoning meeting took place, and a few of us started to actually read what was in the code, the code changes, we realized the different variables and the way that they would interact could cause so many different things, that we weren't sure we could predict everything. And we wondered if the people on the Planning and Zoning Commission also felt the same way, and if they could predict all the outcomes, and if staff could, and if city council will. So we put together this little, it was a meeting, we called it a neighborhood forum. There was one week between announcing it and actually having it. So we fell scrambled, and we didn't know who would show up, but 50 people from different neighborhoods, mostly in the university impact zone, did show up. And they were responding to many of the things that people are talking about at this point in time. So I too ask that you would defer on voting on this, because there are many constituents living in these neighborhoods that would wish to meet and talk about the variables that they think could happen. And I think that's about it. I'll drop this off.
All right. Thank you, Sheri. Whoever would like to speak?
First, I'd like to thank you all for your service. I appreciate the pressure you're under to make a lot of changes.
State your name for the minutes, please.
Oh, sorry, Paula Swigert. And I, I live in the university impact zone, too. So, you know, you've heard a lot of general comments. I've come with some more specific comments about how this might impact particularly me. Maybe the answers are somewhere in all that documentation. At the end, you have appendix with lots of red strikeouts and a little bit of black with all the amendments in there, but I couldn't find them. And these pertain to, specifically to standalone accessory apartments. So are there specific approval criteria for standalone accessory apartments? Do the setback requirements for these conform to the underlying zone? What is the setback between the principal dwelling and a standalone? What is the height limit for a standalone? So for example, my little, single-family, three-bedroom house in an RS8 zone is only 832 square feet, and my neighbor's home in the same zone, right next door, is 672 square feet. Many apartments are larger than my house, but there are also many small homes like mine in older parts of Iowa City. So calculating the dimensions of the house behind me, at the current 30%, a detached unit of 368 or 468 could be built, depending how the square foot footage of the Four Seasons porch is considered, is considered livable space in the calculation. At 50% under the new proposal, either a 613 square foot or an 781 square foot home could be built. Both of those are comparable to my house and my neighbor's house, that are considered single-family homes. So given the size of my house, I kind of have a hard time thinking of a detached apartment of nearly 800 square feet as a separate apartment, and not two single-family homes on the same Some investors might find this to be a way to increasing housing on their properties. However, the cost of building a detached unit, the size of a small house, and therefore the rent to make it a good investment, probably won't make it affordable. One other comment, page 21 of the staff memo that you have today, it cites the APA's Equity in Zoning Policy Guide. Regarding ADUs, it states, quote, "But it may be necessary to limit them to properties where the primary dwelling unit is the owner's primary residence, to avoid speculative investment, particularly used when used as short-term rentals." And that is Iowa City in a nutshell. The best practice of requiring that one unit be owner-occupied should remain, but especially when it comes to detached accessory homes. Thank you.
Thank you, Paula. Whoever is next would like to speak?
Hi, my name is Martha Norbeck. I am a local architect who specializes in green building. I, first of all, want to say the staff, you've blown it out of the water, doing a great job putting this together. There's so much research, the maps, the data. I'm very impressed. I am incredibly impressed with the extensive work that went into this. So, so thank you for your efforts. One of the things I notice, when you said upfront that affordable housing is complicated, so is climate action. And these two go together very nicely. When you're increasing density, you are, of units, you're reducing transportation, carbon from transportation. When you can do a duplex, reducing the amount of carbon that is required to build that building, you're creating a common wall, so the total amount of heat that's required to heat those two dwellings is less than if it were two separate dwellings. It's, it's a win for climate. And one of the things about climate action and affordable housing is there's no one solution. There's no big idea that's going to solve the problems. This is going to be thousands of ideas cumulatively put together, addressing the issue. And I'm very excited about many of these proposals. We have an imperative to act on both housing and climate. And if we sit here and we're like, oh, this possible bad outcome for me personally might affect me negatively, we're never going to create change. And when I hear people say, oh, density, oh, I'm scared of density, I hear that as a proxy for classism. I'm hearing classism. And, and I think we just need to call it out for what it is. The existing housing, the existing neighborhoods are not going to be just ransacked. And I know this, because I designed my mother's house at 1618 Muscatine, after a house that had been horribly neglected was demolished. That is one of the 52 ADUs, and we had to work really hard to come up with a solution. But we're able to provide an apartment to a young man who is economically stressed for $500, utilities included, and my mom is still going to be able to pay for the entire construction cost of that, of that unit in 15 years. And when she's less able, we can have someone living upstairs who can take care of her, and he checks in on her every day. This is the reality of an aging population. My mom's needs are what ADUs are all about. The ADU has been a huge success for her. I'm also working on a project at 724 Ronalds, where a house was demolished after being neglected for many years. We are working with the Historic Preservation Commission. It has not been easy. It is $300 to $350 a square foot to build on that property. It's not like people can come in and just waltz in and do, build, tear things down and build new. It's just not going to work. If you pay $150,000, $200,000 for a property that has an existing house, you're not going to just tear it down and build new. You fundamentally can't, not a $300, $350 square foot. No one's going to buy that house. You're $150,000 out before you even buy one wood stud. It just, the money doesn't make sense. So this concept that people are going to come in and demolish neighborhoods isn't rational. I have studied this. I have considered buying properties in those neighborhoods. I've looked at adding ADUs. It's very difficult. It's very expensive, and historic preservations also make it difficult. So these fears that I'm hearing sound a lot like classism to me, and not reality. And so when we're talking about theory, let's look at ourselves and our hearts and what we're thinking, and question, where, how do we want to support the least among us? This guy who's renting from my mother for $500 a month, that's the story that we want. We have created affordable housing with that ADU. And I will also say that there are, there's a new house on Bloomington Street, where they tore down a house on a corner lot, and now they're trying to sell that new house for $500,000, and guess what? No one's buying. It's been on the, on the market for months, and good luck for them to actually make their investment back on this. These fears about the existing neighborhoods are not based in reality, they're based in fear. And I am desperate to see climate action accelerate, and this, these proposals will help make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Whoever next would like to speak?
My name is Nancy Carlson. I live at 1002 East Jefferson. You know, I think all of us want affordable housing. We want, we want everybody to be able to afford to live, to have a living space. I don't think that is the question. And if we were I Dream of Jeannie, or what is the, one of the other ones that was a TV program back in the 50s, where the genie or the whatever could wiggle her nose, and everything would turn out perfectly. It's too bad we don't live in a city like that, where we could wiggle our noses and go poof, and it would all be solved. It would be wonderful, because then we could all afford to live in some type of living situation. Unfortunately, that was a TV program, and this is reality. And if we are going to deal with living in, living here, we need to live in the situation that we are in. I have lived in my house on Jefferson for 40 years. It was a working-class neighborhood. I have watched structure after structure, which housed either working, if it was owned, it was a working-class person, or if it was rented out, it was rented out to a lower-class personnel. And I have watched over the years, these houses either being changed into rent-by-bedroom, or else torn down, and all the people leave, and all of them have been turned into rent-by-bedroom It has been sad to watch my neighborhood disappear, so that these people could do structures with rent-by-bedroom structures. I have nothing against students. I, I know they need a place to live, affordable, just like we do. The problem is that they, in my neighborhood, have become like the giant that doesn't allow anybody else to live in the neighborhood, to have access to housing. That's why I'm very much afraid of these ADUs, because I'm afraid it's going to be another rent-by-neigh, or a rent-by-bedroom thing for developers. Possibly part of it is because of the expense, but the other thing is, developers can write those things off. An individual's person who lives in their house and does an ADU, I don't think they can depreciate it out. A developer can depreciate it out over 20 years. And so I am asking to, for you to please stop and think about, not how wonderful the idea of having all these ADUs are, and what they could do for our community, because I think they could, but I think you need to stop and think about, what is the reality of the places where we live? And we need to take into consideration not only providing housing for people that we want to, but to make sure that by our actions, we are not decreasing that. Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Whoever next would like to speak?
Honey, I'm Ross Nussar. I'm a local real estate agent and developer, and I just wanted to say, and I'm also a resident of the North Side, I commend the city's attempt to try and help assuage the problem of affordable housing and trying to do something. I think that density is what happens, with, with density can come affordable housing. I also respect the right to comment and to engage the public, and I am in total support of my fellow neighborhoods wanting to have more of an input process on this. But by and large, I think that if we're gonna, if we want to address a problem, we have to do something. And I think that this code amendment shows that we can do something, that this is substantive change that can entice affordable housing and can entice different types of developers. I don't likely buy into the slippery slope fallacy, as I see it, as allowing ADUs will create a boon for developers and investing in those. Construction prices are too high, it's too expensive and cost prohibitive to remodel some of these older structures, and then to build in the rear of the lot, assuming that we have the appropriate setbacks, it doesn't seem like it would likely work out financially. But thank you, city, for trying to put something before us.
Thank you, Ross. Next, whoever would like to speak next?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Scott Haas. I am the Executive Director of Iowa Valley Habitat for Humanity. Also, Iowa City resident. So, at Habitat for Humanity, we focus on ownership, homeownership, especially affordable homeownership. And I think that this is an idea that everybody in this room kind of understands, but I kind of want to just bring it to the forefront of your minds, is how impactful homeownership can be, specifically for children and for the families. And, and in addition to being an asset, actually owning your home allows children to stay in the same school district, allows them to get to know their teachers, allows them to get to go to school for, or with their peers for, you know, as long as they live there. So there are all of these other benefits, in addition to actually, you know, the financial ones that come with owning a home. ones that come with owning a home. And the way that I look at these amendments is that it improves the opportunity for people who are of low income to purchase a home, specifically the amendments to the zero lots or, they're called attached single-family, sorry, attached single-family amendments. And, you know, it's cheaper, especially at Habitat. We can build on a zero-lot line much cheaper than we can on a detached, single-family house. And so it makes it easier for us to build. But I don't think that we're unique in that. And because those costs are lower, then it makes it more affordable for folks to purchase and provides more opportunities. So I support especially the provisions that would allow more zero-lot homes. And in response to something, a question that Mr. Hench said specifically about increasing the size of bedrooms in a home, a zero-lot home, the, it's true, like, it might be true that families are starting to decrease in size, but there's still going to be larger families. And so they're going to need adequate housing. And if all that's available is smaller homes, then they're not going to have that adequate housing. So I recommend that, or I suggest, or I plead maybe, request that you guys just consider that, you know, there might be some demographic changes or trends going one direction, but it won't be the end of larger families with multi-generations. And then the last thing that I have to say is that great neighborhoods come in in a lot of different shapes and different sizes, and they look very different. You can have a great neighborhood with a duplex or a zero lot on the corner and in the block and then on the other corner. You can have a great neighborhood with an ADU. You can have a great neighborhood with a smaller lot where the children play in a common space or at the park. So I like that the city is making an effort to recognize that neighborhoods look different and they can be great no matter what they look like and that zoning won't be a barrier to having a great neighborhood.
Thank you, Scott. Who, whoever next would like to speak?
Good evening. I'm Rabbi Rebecca Kushner. And I fail to be convinced that density bonus benefits a neighborhood necessarily, especially with traffic concerns. I live in Manville Heights. We've had an extreme increase in traffic density since the building, the construction in North Liberty. Some streets are almost impassable. I don't even walk them anymore. Also, Manville Heights has no grocery stores, no convenience stores. Why are you packing so many people in a position where there is no bus route, no way to walk downtown? It's pretty far. And I'm not understanding why diversity and divisiveness come in balance. And it's balancing one against the other. And of course, everybody wants housing for everybody. Everybody wants the world to be kumbaya and function. And yet I would have really welcomed it if the decision had been transparent for the neighborhood associations. I learned of it just by chance. And that seems like something is being kind of bold over, against, or despite the neighborhood's development. And I just wanted to let you think about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Whoever next would like to speak?
I'm a little taller. Ah, good evening. I'm Carol Bonsack. I'm the Executive Officer of the Greater Iowa City Area Home Builders Association. I'm also on the Johnson County Livable Community Coalition, the Johnson County Affordable Home Ownership Coalition. I've been a, I am a past board member of Iowa Valley Habitat for Humanity. I want to take the time, I want to thank the staff for taking the time to meet with and answer questions with the HBA, the Affordable Home Ownership Coalition, the Affordable Living Coalition. This is a good start, as the memo says. It's not going to solve all the issues related to housing affordability. But, and there have been a lot of compromises that have been made about design standards, the way ADUs look, the way the duplexes look. There have been multiple moving parts to this in the eight and a half years that I've been the Executive Officer and been meeting with City of Iowa City staff. And so I do want to say that we support these changes and proposals that are being made to zoning. It's kind of the, the things that zoning can do, some of the things that they can do to help with affordability. With the Livable Community Coalition, the Accessory Dwelling Units, we are supporting that, not for, to make neighborhoods a plethora of rental opportunities, but so that people can continue living in place in their homes so that someone can, either they can live in the ADU, an elderly person, or your mom or your dad can live in the ADU while you live in your home, or you can live in the ADU in the backyard, or someone else can take care of your, your family members that are in need of that, or any other, whether it's aging or disabilities. And so it's a good thing. And then the, the, as far as the group homes, three of our student-built houses, house programs that we've had, and then we have an upcoming student-built house. But two, the, three of the student-built houses that we did in Iowa City were for Reach For Your Potential. And so there were areas that we could not build those homes. And the students couldn't get that education. And the Reach For Your Potential residents couldn't live in because they weren't zoned throughout Iowa City. But this zoning changes will help to be able to build those homes. It'll treat them like every other multifamily house rather than an institution or the old phrasing within the zoning codes. And so we support that as well. Again, I want to take the time to thank the staff for taking the time to meet with us and answer our questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Whoever next would like to address the commission?
Hi there. My name is Kelsey Patrick-Fury. I am a member of the South District Neighborhood Association, but I'm here in my personal capacity, just to locate myself within the city. I'm here to support these changes. And I also want to specifically thank city staff for answering some questions that I had that were not addressed other ways, including thank you for mentioning that you have looked at other college towns and seen what they've done with their zoning and what things are working for them. I want to remind us why we're here. The old regulations that we have in place have caused problems. In 2015, it was found that Iowa City was the 14th most economically segregated city in the country. And we've been working on fixing that ever since. This, this change, this will finally start to make some of the bigger changes that we need to make in our housing types in order to address these issues. The fact that Iowa City is that economically segregated has caused problems for the schools over and over and over again. My kids go to Alexander Elementary School. It is in the southwest part of Iowa City. They have been assigned to go to middle school in the northeast part of Coralville. That's northeast, or northwest junior high, sorry. I'm getting east and west backwards. All the way across Iowa City, all the way across Coralville. The schools had to do that because of how economically segregated Iowa City is. So I appreciate that we're finally doing something about this. I've been participating in all of these meetings for almost a decade at this point. The reports that the staff presented, there were plenty of meetings about these reports. I was at several of them. This is not new. This is not surprising. This is not being put on people at the last minute. Staff have come and talked to the South District Neighborhood Association because we invite them to come and talk to us regularly. They come and we talk about zoning issues. We talked about form-based code quite a lot when the form-based code was changing south of our area. This is not, you know, this is not something that is being dumped on people at the last minute. This is people who haven't participated in this process because they didn't think that affordable housing was going to affect them until they found out that it was. The city is moving in the right direction. There's free bus service. They are reducing partaking, that is true, but they're adding a lot of incentives. This is going to help us avoid sprawl. This is going to help us be more environmentally friendly. I love this inclusive zoning. I enjoy that this is going to make things more walkable and more bikeable, which is what a lot of young people want. And that's very much unlike North Liberty and Tiffin and other cities in the area. I just want to really emphasize, this has been a decade-long process. City staff is always accessible. They will talk to you about anything you have questions about. And I don't want you to scuttle this at the last minute. Thank you.
Thank you, Kelsey. Whoever would like to speak next?
My name is Mary Bennett, and I swore I'd not come up here because I've done it too many times before. And I've watched planning and zoning. I've watched the Historic Preservation Commission. I've watched the City Council. I've heard arguments for 45, 50 years on what some of these plans could be. I've been on planning some of these things like Wally. Yes, I did not know about this until Sunday. And I don't, I'm plugged into what's going on. And I know it was not deliberate for you to hide this information from me, but if it's going to impact me, I want to have input. And so I again encourage you to defer any vote or decision on this until you do gather that input. I actually applaud all these progressive leaders that have come up to the podium, whether they're from Habitat or from Humanity or another sector that helps the disadvantage of our community. But it sounds like you've been in rather intimate conversation with them for quite a long time and not with those other people. And I want to have you not be turning your back on 50 years of successful historic preservation activity in this town, which many dedicated people have spent an equal amount of time on, trying to educate and inform people about our community history and the ties that bind us and give us a level of stability that's often lacking in other communities. And yes, we live in stable neighborhoods. But I'm not classist, and I resent being accused of that. And I am not sexist, and I'm not racist. We all want affordable housing. I was sat in these planning and zoning meetings where I was, you know, bought the villa goods that, well, we need density downtown so we can counteract suburban sprawl and keep things out by the highland or farmland. At the same time, you're having developers come in with plans for every single square inch of this county and surrounding area. And on a personal level, I just had a friend who's been waiting for years to return to Iowa City since 1985. The market was pricing her out. Unfortunately, she paid double the value of the house over on Burlington. And it's a classic example of a former University of Iowa football player who's a millionaire who came in and bought the property, is turning it over for twice that amount. He didn't address the drainage in the sewer pipe in the basement. He just had the windows painted shut and put hotel-type carpeting over the hardwood floors. So anyone coming back into that neighborhood now has even higher costs trying to rehabilitate that property because of the historic building, the windows and expenses that will be involved. So how does a single mom afford to rehab these houses that we have allowed landlords to turn into blight-ridden places where they haven't kept up the moisture problems or the drainage problems, where they haven't addressed the lead paint problems? You talk about climate change. Well, every time you tear down a house, where does that material end up? It ends up in the landfill. And I think people want yards, they want to be able to step out onto their porch. They want to be able to have gardens. They want walkability. These are all things that the neighborhoods in this university impact zone enjoy. And we're not elitist. We are not any wealthier than most people in our neighborhood. We live in a mixed neighborhood. I love students. I've taught students for 45 years. I think students are the future. But we also have to live with old people, middle-aged people, young people, and children. And I think some of your plan is very much a slap in the face to some of the older people in this community who have dedicated their lives to making it a better place to live and enjoy our neighbors and our friends and the things that this town has offered us. So please wait and listen to our side of the story. We support what you're trying to do. There's a lot of wisdom in your report. I appreciate and applaud what you did. But it's also textbook-oriented, and it has not got any humanist values embedded in it other than you use the shield of diversity and disability to again excuse what the developers are doing, which are lining their pockets at our expense. And I mean those of us who live below the highest income levels in this town. And this repeatedly happens. My entire life in Iowa City has been me marching up to this podium, trying to encourage sensitivity among you leaders at whatever level you're at. You're investing an enormous amount of time, but give us your ears. Give us your hearts. Give us your minds. And don't always look at the bottom dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Whoever next would like to speak?
Good, good following, Mary. I'm Mary Beth Slaniger, and I'm from Goostown. And I've not in any way absorbed all the things in that 65-page, whatever it was. And I just found about it recently. So I, I'm in the group that says, please just hold off a little bit longer till it can be absorbed in neighborhoods more thoroughly. But I just wanted to add, living in Goostown, I think, I think the value for Iowa Cityans is that what we have that North Liberty and Tipton and all the other places don't have are historic neighborhoods and beautiful houses that reflect that. And in Goostown, in the 1990s, my husband and I were given a grant by the city. I, I'm trying to suggest possible other ways also of looking at encouraging low-income housing. Goostown is probably at the bottom, or near the bottom of the list of wealthy homes. And we were given a grant, a depreciating grant, that if we put money into restoration, that loan would be taken away eventually. I think it was 10 years. Would there be a way of doing that, of giving people grant money to upgrade some of these very small homes instead of getting them out to the landfill and letting developers come in? I encourage, pardon me, I don't like to speak publicly at all. I encourage you to think about a more creative way of looking at some of these properties rather than just obliterating them and appreciating their historic value. So thank you.
Thank you, Mary Beth. Whoever would like to speak next? Second call for, first go around for public comment? Seeing none, we'll go ahead. We've been going at it for two and a half hours. Let's go ahead and take a five-minute restroom break. We'll start again at exactly 8:35.
There's some water in there, too.
I could use some water.
Can I ask you a quick question?
Not without this.
No. General question. Procedural question. If there's a question in clarification, how does, how do I ask that? Because I can't like open it back up.
We're still in public hearing. So usually the chair will ask if you have any further questions.
Okay.
That's usually how.
Okay. Thank you.
So I get for drinking 20 ounces of water while we sit here?
Oh, man. I wish I would have brought a sweater.
I know. It's a little cool, isn't it?
I've been doing this. I don't want people to think I'm sitting here, you know, with my arms crossed.
Right.
You know, bad. But I am freezing.
Yeah. It's a little chilly up here.
Oh.
I thought it'd warm up if people in here.
Yeah, it hasn't. Their air must just be continually flowing.
Yeah. I'll put some hot air out there.
Yeah, that's what we need.
So non-topic related, but what do you do, Maggie?
Well, I'm retired.
Are you?
I'm retired. I work, I just got a part-time job working downtown at a retail store.
Oh, really?
Yeah. I like, I didn't, I need to have, I like working.
Yeah, you gotta stay busy.
I do. Yeah. Yeah.
Work for, I'm not saying I don't like, I work for Toyota Financial Services. We're based out of Cedar Rapids, but they relocated down to Texas. So, but I work from home.
It depends on the sense of the commission. We could go until we resolve everything. We can continue the meeting.
Frozen con.
This is the only item on the agenda besides the public's interested in. There should be an agenda back there on that, that podium that's reversed there. You can see it on the left.
Now my work's at home. So like, oh, later at night, you know, it gets quiet. I'll just check my email. So there's no defined, like, these are my.
I do not know, Chad, do you know who they appointed last night? Do you know the name?
Not off the top of my head. Sorry. Actually, I think I.
I just hope they last longer than the last one, one day.
A few hours, you know?
Well, you are kind of intimidating, Mike, so.
We're a scary group. We're gonna go home and put like a heavy blanket on.
I am bringing a parka next time.
Interesting.
It is freezing.
Is that still unlocked?
Yeah. It should be.
Quellhorst.
Quellhorst?
Yeah.
I recognize the name. I can't tell you where.
Scott Quellhorst?
There is, yeah, in a picture. Like, real sergeant. How it is when I'm not around. My oldest son with his 15-year-old son and his almost 13-year-old daughter at my house. And he's very, they're both athletic, and he, like, we're going for a run today. And then you gotta do your stretching afterwards. Where do they live? They're not the Brooklyn. Yeah, they're in Brooklyn.
All right, it's 8:35. We're going to go ahead and re-adjourn. We finished the first round of public comment with the five minutes per speaker. Now is the opportunity for people to re-comment with the two-minute limitation. So if you have new information that you would like to share with us, now is the opportunity. So it'd be just like the first round. If you have, would like to speak for the two minutes with some new information, please come forward. And if you haven't signed in, sign in. And then again, I'll have a timer going. So anybody who'd like to go for a second round with some information for the commission?
Do I need to sign in again?
Nope. Just say your name again.
Martha Norbeck. I want to make it clear, and Steph, if you could nod your head in confirmation, this is not changing the historic or conservation district requirements, correct?
Yes.
Okay. That, I want to make that crystal clear, that, that none of the historic preservation or conservation district rules are being changed by any of these amendments. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha. Anybody else like to come up for their second go-around for two-minute limitation? Second call? Hi, Sheri.
Hi. I guess, pardon?
Name.
Oh, Sharon DeGraw. There was one house that was referred to that's a new construction, and it sits at the corner of Bloomington and Union Street. So what happened was a little cottage came down that was, I think it was listed for around $160,000 or valued at that. So when the new house is now constructed, it has three bedrooms, I believe upstairs, and a bedroom in the basement, or like a studio or something in the basement. And that house was originally listed for $590, $590,000, and it didn't sell. Subsequently, the rooms have been rented out, and we've seen them listed for about $900 to $1,000 per bedroom per month. So if you times that by four, that's getting close to $4,000. And those are pretty expensive prices. I don't think a lot of people, well, that's expensive. Some people will be priced out of that. If you take a cottage in the Goose Town area, clear the lot, remove the house, would it be possible, I'm thinking, to do a duplex where you have four college students on, in each duplex and charge again somewhere between $7,000 and $1,000 per bedroom, and then do an ADU in the back with two students again? That seems like it's getting close to $7,000 to $10,000 per month. And that's a game-changer. That's more what we're worried about in terms of transforming the neighborhoods. Or when I say "we," that's the people I've spoken to in the North Side area. There was one other point which I might have forgotten. I think I did. That's it.
Thank you, Sheri. Anyone else like to go for a second time around, two-minute limit?
I guess I can't help myself. I'm Jim Throgmorton again. So I think, ask yourself, do I really understand, meaning you, do I really understand what the staff is recommending? Am I confident that I understand how these proposed amendments will actually affect development in this city? And if the answer's no, you should not vote tonight. Full stop. You just should not vote tonight. And then another thing I'd like to say is, you know, we have a council election coming up in November, and there are four seats up for election. A large part of this particular proposal, technically good though it is, and I have a lot of admiration for Ann and Kirk for what they've done, a key part of it is the politics of it. And ask yourself, are you confident, I know you're not making political decisions here, but are you confident that there's a political will in this city to make the biggest change in the zoning code in 20 years? And to make it before the council election? Do you think there's a will to do that? Is that a good idea to do that? I think the answer is no. It's not a good idea to do that, but it's up for you to decide. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Anybody else like to address the commission for a two-minute limit? And state your name again, please.
Nancy Carlson. At this point, this, our area, the impact area, has the highest land property taxes per square foot of any area in the city. One of my fears is if we continue to allow more and more development on each of these lots, does this make each of these lots more valuable? So does that mean that the people who are, who live in this area, their taxes, their property taxes go up, will we, because of these kind of changes, and if we develop these, have more development in our lots? Are you going to price out some of we people who don't have a lot of money, who are trying to stay in the neighborhood because of the, because of the rise of property taxes, because of the development that is possible? Thank you.
Thank you, Nancy. Anyone else?
Too late to speak for the first time?
You got two minutes. Make sure you sign in.
My name is Ginny Blair, and I also don't like speaking in public. But I agree with a whole bunch of stuff. I'm all for affordable housing, and I'm very fond of the idea of the ADUs, which originally I thought meant accessible dwelling units, and they were supposed to be the granny flat version, the back of the lot to help people age in place. And it was important that it was for owner occupied and then an extra dwelling. That all makes perfect sense to me. And affordable housing is important. And what I don't understand is how extra housing is necessarily going to make it affordable, because there's this voluntary part. So developers can build a certain way and get a deal, but they don't have to. And I'm just wondering, all the townhouses that are being built up around town, are those less expensive places to live? Because I have a feeling they're not. I would like more supervision. I love Habitat. I'm a fan of the Housing Fellowship. And I'm in favor of climate change, but I don't see any regulations for any of that. So I wish you would work with those people for the greater good.
All right. Thank you very much. Anyone else like to come back for two minutes? Second call? Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Now we come to the portion of the meeting where we can make motions on this for consideration. Being chair, I can't make a motion, but I'd like to offer a couple suggestions of possibilities for what people could make a motion for. One, we can vote on these amendments. There's five amendments in toto. We could consider the amendments separately. Or we could vote to defer the meeting, any decisions or further discussion to a future meeting. So could I hear a motion?
I move that we vote on all five together.
So a motion by Craig to vote on all five amendments tonight?
Is that a motion to approve?
Motion to approve, yes.
And to approve? Is there a second for that?
I second.
Second by Padron. Discussion. Susan, since you made the motion, you can discuss first?
Well, it's, as everyone has said tonight, a very complicated issue. But when you look at what started all this, five years ago, there was a charge to look at the zoning code. And it's taken that long and worked through many housing-affiliated organizations to get to where we are today. I think the staff has done an outstanding job. And we're here to find solutions that improve housing choice, increase the housing supply, and encourage affordability. And will any of these things actually happen? We don't know because we're not in charge that part. Someone has to build these places. And, you know, I know there are landlord, bad landlords and bad developers, but there are good landlords and good developers, and people who want to preserve the feel of community in Iowa City. They just can't afford to do it right now. And we have to give them the tools that let the good people do the good stuff. And I think the staff has brought us a proposal, well-researched, that we're trying to give them the tools that we think they need. People want absolutes. They want predictions, you know? You can't predict what's going to happen. And, you know, I mean, Jim, you were on the city council. How many things did you do that you thought was going to happen? Things were going to go this way, and they went the other way. You can't, you, there is no, there's no assurance that it's going to work. We're just doing our best to give the good people the right tools to do the good things. And that's why I support this.
Maria, you seconded. So your opportunity?
Well, I don't have much to say. I, I like this proposal. I think my main reason for supporting this would be this is all the sustainability part that Martha mentioned, mainly reducing the carbon emissions. And I see density as less transportation, less individual transportation, and more ways of walking. Yeah, I'll just, I want to give it a shot to what the staff proposed. It might not work, you know? It's okay. I'm here to take the fall if it doesn't work.
I'll just go ahead and comment. I am in favor with the majority of this, like amendment number one, amendment number two, amendment number five, would vote absolutely yes tonight. But a couple of the others, I would like some more discussion and an opportunity to vote on these separately. So I think I would vote no on this tonight because I really want to vote on these amendments separately. I could probably be, I might be able to be persuaded on a couple of them, but I'm just not right now. But I have a question for Sarah. So with this, if this motion is voted down, is this, is this, I mean, if this is, if this motion fails, then is this done tonight? We can't make a different motion then to ask for these to be approved per amendment or discussed per amendment?
Well.
Does that put a little bit in the pickle?
For tonight, right, it would be done.
Yeah. And then how would it be reintroduced, though?
Well, the commission could ask for it to be presented again at a future meeting.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Just to add to that, or it could just go to city council with recommendation.
Denial recommendation, right.
Is there an opportunity to, opportunity to amend a recommendation at this point, or is it just a straight-up-down vote? I guess I don't know how.
The motion on the floor.
Okay.
Could be amended.
Because I would support this motion if I could make some amendments to it. Because my big concern is I really think there should be an ownership requirement for the ADUs, particularly for the attached ADUs. That's my number-one issue. So I would support this if we could have an amendment to allow that.
I want to hear what other people have to say.
Yeah, so do I. Yeah. Folks, any discussion?
All right. So actually, Mike, you read my mind, I think. So I want to share a little bit from kind of where I'm coming from, and then the second part on the ADU. I agree there's no single solution, looking to bring back people to the community that couldn't afford originally, and also retain people in our community from affordability. As far as the ADU portion, I kind of look at that a little bit two ways, both from private ownership. That was a good example of age in place and having somebody living on the same property that helps later in life. But also from a private ownership, I think with as an owner occupied, it provides a pathway for a private owner to essentially build value within their existing property to make it more affordable for their personal ownership. So that's the reason I'm kind of leaning towards private ownership requirement on ADU.
Maggie?
Well, first, I want to thank everybody who's been here. It's been very helpful for me to hear everybody's opinions, and I really appreciate everybody taking the time to be here till nine o'clock at night to help us understand the issues. And I was really
And I, I was really impressed with the packet. It was, all the information was very helpful. I remain somewhat up in the air. I'm, I come from one of those historic district situations, and I really value the neighborhoods there. So I, I'm, I'm, I don't want to upset at the neighborhood feel, but I do feel overall that we need to move forward, and with, with hesitation, I am going to support this.
Is there a motion to amend the motion that was already made on the accessory dwelling units? Because I just heard at least one person commented that they had interest in that. So from, so can I make that?
No, Susan would have to make a motion. It's her, her motion on the floor. I know. Not to put pressure on you, sorry.
And, and my request is simply that ADUs have to have the owner occupied. Now, the, somebody on the, the property, whether residing in the primary dwelling unit or the ADU, is the owner of the property.
How many votes do we need? How many votes do we need? Four?
If we can pass the majority of this tonight, then I am willing to amend my motion to take out the, the number, the one under number three, is it C?
Getting a nod, it's 3C. Getting the nod. It's 3C.
Okay. I, in the, in, to move this along, we have two members that are here, and we have two members who have raised concerns about this one particular thing. And so I will amend my motion to include passage, approval of everything except the language relating to ADUs, which should be discussed more further.
What particular amendment is that in subsection amendment? So will we be clear on that?
It's 144C2A.
Can I just ask, does the commission want further discussion on this and staff to do more research and come back with more information? Or would, would you prefer it just be revised to include the owner occupancy requirement and move forward with that requirement?
Well, I'm not in favor of the owner occupancy requirement. So no, I, I feel like the concerns, there've been concerns that the neighborhood associations should be involved. And so, and, and this issue seems to be the one that is most concerning to people. And so I would like the staff just to give the neighborhood associations an opportunity to get back to us if they have opinion. So it would need to be a month or two, so they have opportunities to gather groups. That's what I would like. Not that we've changed the language yet, but let's have a discussion, have the discussion with the neighborhood associations, have, and then you, based on that discussion, come back to us, whether you're changing your recommendation or not, and then we'll talk about it again.
Do you, Maria, second the amendment? Or do we have, I guess, a second to the amendment? I don't think you have to.
I have to second.
Yes. You have to second my amendment.
Okay, so you're amending?
Just to remove the ADU and talk about it later.
No, I don't second. Well, I mean, a second just means that it goes to the floor. It doesn't mean that I, that I support the amendment. And if you read, like, you know, Robert's, no, what is it called? It just means that I supported a discussion.
Right.
So if I second, it just goes to the floor, and we can, yeah. Yeah.
Okay. So we have a motion and second for amendment deleting the ADU portion of the presentation tonight that was in the packet, but then supporting passage of everything else as presented. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. Further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion and second signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, the motion passes unanimously.
I think we should probably have another motion about 3C, like a motion to defer, essentially.
144C2A.
Right. 3C is what you're referring to.
In the memo.
In the memo. 144C2A, though, is the code section, right?
Susan, you want to make that motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion, that, that, that section that Kirk just said, be deferred for a future meeting, and in, and before that meeting, neighborhood associations will be contacted and given an opportunity to respond to the proposal.
Do, should we set a, give a date for that?
It's.
You know, like, September 20th? That's the meeting, just.
Well, I don't know what the meeting, when neighborhood associations meet, so it's hard.
That's two months, about, so. I, I just, it's helpful for everybody if we have a target date.
I would say the, our first meeting in October.
Okay. All right. So is that your motion?
Yes.
All right. Is there a second to that?
I second.
So a motion by Craig, second by Padron. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Item number five, consideration of meeting minutes for July 19th, 2023. Is there any major additions or corrections anybody has to those minutes? There is.
Move to approve.
Motion by Elliott for approval, is there a second?
Maybe you want to second it?
Second.
Second by Craig.
Of course, Billy, when you need it.
So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes for July 19th. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Number six, planning and zoning information. Anna Kirk?
Just one announcement, that a new commissioner was appointed last night at city council. I still haven't received his contact information from the city clerk, but hopefully he'll be joining a meeting in maybe the next meeting, or maybe September.
All right. I just hope that his tenure will exceed the length of the last person of one day.
I think he already has.
He hasn't resigned yet.
Is there any additional planning and zoning information by a member of the commission? Kirk, do you have anything? Sarah?
No.
All right. Item number seven, adjournment. Is there a motion for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.
Motion by Elliott, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Wade. Discussion? Hearing no discussion, those in favor of adjourning signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying nay. Hearing no nays, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, everybody.